I am hitting recording, so anytime you want to begin, it's 12:59. I'll leave that up to you, Mayor.
A good meeting starts on time, so we'll give it one more minute.
You mean, we're supposed to act professional? Is that what you're saying?
That's right, Keith. Okay.
I'm just saying, no cuss words.
We will call this work session to order Wednesday, December 7th, or 2nd, excuse me. The time is 1:00 PM. We'll open it up for visitor comments. Matt, and I can't see the participants. I can only see the council members.
Yep.
So if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Find that in the icon. Raise your hand. Matt will acknowledge you. We'll give you just a minute here.
Mayor, I do not see anybody raising their hand or sending me a chat.
Well, Brady. I thought Brady had his hand raised.
Brady's got a thumbs up on my screen.
Oh, he is not coming up on my screen, so let me go ahead and get him on.
Yeah, my screen's only showing just five people. I need to be able to see this. Let's figure it out.
Hello, so this is public comment, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I noticed on your agenda that you have a hearing today from the Economic Development Team looking for, looks like they're looking for some kind of and I would say that I am opposed to that. While the new director for the economic team, Paul Vogel, has done a better job than the previous director, I'm still pretty unhappy in that he sent out an email and in the paper falsely stating that Mike Seeley has approved and supports the rezone at Port Westward. That is patently false. And in my opinion, any organization that just makes up information, we can certainly disagree about whether the rezone should or should not be approved. And I, you know, objectively, there are arguments on both sides, but you can't lie. And if you, if you're going to just start making up stuff, then to me, you've proven yourself to be a unworthy recipient of any funds, and frankly, I think he should be terminated. That would be my goal if I was on their board and should not be allowed to continue to just make up information.
Okay, thank you, Brady.
Thanks.
Yep. Any other visitor comments?
Mayor, as you went out, Paul Vogel will be on the call a little bit later. As part of the meeting, I may be able to respond to that. I do not see any other comments, Mayor.
Okay. So let's go to our first item on the agenda, which is Comcast franchise agreement discussion.
Okay, one second.
Yep.
Do we happen to have someone from Comcast available for a Q and A?
We do. Tim Goodman is, should be getting on the call. Trying to get him to unmute and.
I'm here.
Hey, Tim, right there.
Yeah, and I'm here, and then I can, I can turn the video on too whenever it's appropriate.
Yeah, if you're, if you can do that now.
Okay. My dog's with me, so in case she gets excited about somebody walking down the street, I just wanted to warn you in advance.
That makes two of us.
So Mayor, I know my name is on there as well as John. I think it's probably appropriate for William, one of our city attorneys, to kind of get things started, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, it is absolutely perfect.
Bill?
Great. Well, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Matt. So I've been involved in the Comcast negotiations for the last several months, but it's been an ongoing process since the original, or not the original, but the existing franchise agreement expired in 2007. But by operation of law, it's been continued along all the terms while there's been discussion about updating and revising the agreement. So when I stepped in, a couple of the lawyers had already worked on the matter, and much of the work had already been done to adapt the franchise agreement to a different format. That's a choose by the Metropolitan Area Communications Commission that's based in Beaverton that serves most of the communities within Washington County and beyond. So that format was considered to be a little bit more complete. As a result, you don't have a red line version in front of you of the changes made to the original agreement because it would have been totally difficult to understand because of the nature of the various changes. So I prepared a memo that is within the packet that tries to identify some of the major changes and also talks about some of the things that remain the same. Some of the things remain the same. The request to grant another 10-year extension of the franchise agreement to create a new document, good for 10 years. It also provides for the same franchise rate because over the course of the last several years, the Federal Communications Commission has stepped in and basically taken away many of the local government rights to regulate rates and do such things as requests, shall we say, preferential services for city facilities, school facilities, and the like. Back in the heyday of cable television franchising, local governments had a lot more latitude than they have today under the FCC regulations. So this, this agreement, that's before you, has some changes, but as I said, there are many things that you'll, you'll find, find the same. Comcast has been very cooperative in helping us to adapt this agreement to the Mac franchise format. We've added some definitions that make it clearer what the what the most up-to-date meaning of language within the agreement is. We've added some, some sections that give more clarity as to Comcast's responsibility when it's asked to relocate lines within the city, work within the right of way. If they do any activity that disrupts a, a public road or things of that nature. All of those requirements have been reviewed by the Public Works Department in Engineering, and I believe they're satisfied with the, with the results that is, again, more clear as to what the responsibilities are. And that's not to say that Comcast hasn't been cooperative in the past. From my understanding, they have been. The, the agreement has some, some changes, some increases in the amount of insurance, as you would expect. 13 years after the, the last agreement was, was created, there's a need to update the liability insurance as well as the performance bond. There's some requirements on providing reports to the, to the city and opportunity for the city, if it wants to, to request an executive summary of any complaints that are filed over the course of a year by consumers, by subscribers to the, to the facilities. There's also a change that's been requested by Comcast that's not within the body of the agreement, but it's actually in an attachment. There's an attachment that's was also in the earlier agreement or the existing agreement that refers to customer standards. And one of those that I know is of particular interest to the, to the council is in regards to customer service and representatives. In the existing agreement, there is a requirement that says that a customer service office must be located within the city limits, and it has to be adequately staffed to respond to subscribers and and be open at least 40 hours per week. However, it also says in that existing agreement that the company has the right to relocate to another location outside of the city as long as, as long as it is within Columbia County, if it gives the city 60 days notice. This is of interest because Comcast has experienced the same issues that other businesses have during the COVID-19 situation that it had to close its office and to relocate, rather to reopen it and operate it. It would have to do so in a different way than it was able to earlier this year. And in fact, Comcast has found that it has been able to deliver a service to its subscribers either by having its technicians bring replacement equipment or information to its subscribers' homes, or in some cases, drop off mail-in envelopes for folks to be able to send back equipment or send them directly equipment, just as most of us are experiencing with the advent of more online shopping. So Comcast has requested within this agreement that we remove that requirement of there being a local office. And instead, they would, they would operate in a way that is less customer contact, shall we say. So that's my overall summary of the, of the agreement. I know you have it on your agenda tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the agreement, any questions about proposed changes. And of course, Tim is here from Comcast, and he's very familiar with the, with the agreement as he's been involved in the negotiations throughout.
I have a question.
William, when are you taking your questions?
Oh, I'll be happy to take those questions. I'm not sure how to manage those. I assume that Matt's in control of of that. Do you do a process where the mayor takes them?
Yeah, yeah. Well, Counselor, Counselor Topaz did actually have the floor. He said he had a question, and I think was waiting for a response from an okay. So go ahead, Counselor Topaz.
Okay, well, because of this pandemic theoretically is temporary. The location of a customer service center here in town, could that be on a temporary, different basis? And when the pandemic is considered manageable, can we then go back to, we have our permanent location here in town as we do now? Because this sounds like if we go this way, they can forever keep not having a hard location here in town. I just want a flexibility in time because of crises that are happening in our town or in our society.
Yes, I understand, Counselor Topaz. The, the way the language is written in this agreement, it's language that's been proposed by Comcast. We spent quite a bit of time discussing it, and perhaps you'd like to have some comments at some point by, by Tim. But as we discussed it, Comcast has told us that this is not a decision that they've come to lightly. They're, they've been going through a process internally to talk about how they provide the best customer service to the subscribers. So their recommendation is to be given the opportunity to not have the requirement of, of an office. They've actually provided us with some level of detail of the number of customers they've had over the the time, the prior year before the pandemic. And it, it looks like there really aren't a lot of subscribers that actually go to that, that facility because consumer, consumer preferences have gone more towards the, the contact less customer service. So at this time, the agreement doesn't provide for a temporary office. It's certainly one that Comcast could maintain if they chose to reopen their office. But this agreement allows Comcast to make that determination solely on its own.
Well, the one issue I have against this, and I'm just going to state that you, you also left out that they're supposed to give us written notice, but also the subscribers within 60 days is the way it reads every day. So you left out the, you left out the subscribers. And for me personally, I have had an issue with a remote that controlled my DVR, and it was not the actual DVR, it was the remote. And I think we went and maybe even replaced the box, went out there, came home, hooked it back up, found out it was remote, went back. Now, if I'm waiting on somebody to deliver me a box and, and I have a remote issue, and I'm paying, I'm paying 200 plus a month. That's what I gotta say. The way the agreement reads now is I can go get with, if COVID was not in place, and probably even with COVID, you really could actually reopen. The office was very well-spaced. That I can go and get my remote. Now, if I'm stuck here and I'm calling Comcast, which is sometimes hard to find a number for Comcast, trust me, I've had those issues. You get a code on your screen saying this is what's happening. And, but no number, no phone number. So there's one issue for corporate right there. I get a code, but I don't get a number to call. So why is that? And then the other issue would be for the elderly that don't drive. I, I understand that we could go, have the option to go to a store if we want to get it quicker. And maybe it's going to be a second-rate store in Longview. Well, if they don't drive, how they get into Longview? How are they getting to Hillsboro? We're population-wise, 40 out of 241 incorporated cities in Oregon. And I feel this, they're making a huge mistake in their customer service. I don't run their business model. And I know people like Matt Brown work for them, and he's crunching numbers and trying to cut dollars. And that's the bottom line. That's what's going on here. And I feel that their service is going down to increase their profit. And I don't think it's fair to, to myself personally or citizens to not at least have them put out some type of notice and allow a public hearing in 60 days to review this contract. In my opinion, that's the way the old one reads. So write each subscriber in our area, Columbia County, and tell them what your thought process is, and then come back and talk to us.
Mayor?
Yes.
Are you finished?
I am, yes.
Okay, can I have an opportunity here to basically say that I concur exactly with what you're saying? And I'm concerned about our citizens in our community, all of our citizens that have, that, that need help with their, with their system, me being one. I, I, and I also have a question for William and I, and Tim, but this is, I can't recall the 60-day notice. And I actually went into our city manager, and I said, can you show us that letter? And no, there was no letter. I never got one as a subscriber and as a, to Comcast that I can recall. So in that sense, that 60-day, that 60-day notice, I'm not quite certain how effective that was in terms of notifying the city that they would actually be pulling the plug in the city of St. Helens and moving to Longview with their office. I also, because I'm looking at the, at the customer service and telephone responsiveness area, 1.1A, where it does state that if you move out of the city, you cannot move out of the county. And that's your language. That's Comcast language with, with this. And this is a blatant, blatant breach of, breach of contract. It's, 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 it's obvious. And I wanted to know if Mr., from Mr. Goodman, if they are members of the Joint Utilities Association of Oregon? And if they're, if they're, if they're, if their membership is paid up? And I would like to get some answers possibly from Mr. Goodman today regarding, regarding that issue of pulling the plug not only on the city without effective and efficient notice of 60 days, which is states in your contract, and also not staying within the county and moving across state lines. I, I don't think that's right. I think it's a, I think it's a huge breach, and I would like to see some resolution to that before we go on and sign, go with the signing of a, of a new contract. And so that's my, that's my questions, that's my comments, and obviously, I'm not happy with Comcast.
So I can respond whenever appropriate.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thanks, man.
Sorry, I was, I was muted. Sorry. I was on my computer.
Yeah, on, on the potential breach of contract, that would be the current franchise if we tried to close it now. Okay, and, and we're looking at a new.
I, I, I don't understand that. That would be the current franchise if we tried to close it now. What does that mean?
Well, yeah, we're currently operated under the franchise, under a franchise that was renewed, you know, what, 12, 13 years ago?
2007, to be exact.
Okay, thank you. And so there, there are certain requirements in that franchise with the city between us and you that we're supposed to maintain. One of those was the customer service center within, within the county. And the, so if we basically tried to move the store outside the county now, then we would be in breach of the current franchise. We're talking about a new franchise where the requirement that's in the old franchise would go away for, for that we have a permanent customer service center there in St. Helens or somewhere in Columbia County. So the store's been closed since mid-March because of COVID. And if we renew the same franchise, if we renew the franchise as proposed to you today, then at some point, if we just, when, and we, we most likely will do this. In fact, I would be shocked if we didn't. Would, we would decide to close it permanently. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, jerk you around.
And that's, that's concerning to me that, that, that you're using a pandemic. In my opinion, and I will state this for the record, and I want, I really want some written notice because you really are operating for, we just approved 800, over 800 units, Tim. We have another 300 coming into St. Helens alone. We're number 40 in population. You're using a pandemic because your store has been closed, and you realize the amount of money you could potentially save, and you're using a pandemic, pandemic as a stepping stone to start operating this way.
Actually, that's not true.
It appears, it appears.
Yeah, and I'll explain. The proposal for that piece in the franchise was done well before the pandemic ever hit. It was done at least more than a year ago, you know, and I don't know if it was 19 or 18, but it's been, you know, within the last two years. It was way before the pandemic, we'd made that proposal. It's purely, yes, it is. It's a business decision. You know, we were averaging in 2018, 16 visits a day. And then in 19, it was 15 visits a day. So there's, you know, a little bit of a decline. That's not a whole lot of visitation for a store and to maintain it open, you know, especially when things are changing, you know, things are not the way they were 10 years ago. You know, we have, everything is gone, you know, everything is done online digitally, you know, people pay their bills online. They can call in, they can mail it, they can go to a Western Union store and pay. If they need to return or receive equipment, they can have it done at their home. We can just ship, send them UPS labels, or they can go to UPS store and send it back to us or receive it. Or technicians can come get it in exchange. You know, there's all these different ways now, and the, the pandemic, you know, this, these are things we were doing before the pandemic hit. It wasn't because of the pandemic. And so, you know, the, the days of, you know, everybody going to the store, they've just been, you know, that just continues to go down. And yes, it is a business decision, and I'm, and that's, you know, when we looked at the store, but we were looking at the store several years ago. And if the franchises approved us today, and we decide we are going to permanently close that, which will probably happen, we are required by federal law and the franchise to notify the city as well as all of our customers. And that customer requirement would go to the corresponding city, the adjacent cities such as Scapus and Columbia City and people who live outside the city jurisdictions as well. But it's, the pandemic has created a time where we're looking at, you know, closures throughout the region of stores. Like, I don't even have an office anymore. My office is, I had to go clean it out a week ago, and it's being combined with three other facilities into one because of COVID, because we, you know, like, it's not like going away anytime soon. But again, this store closure was not pandemic-driven. We were already looking at that. And we had already, you know, proposed language in the franchise well before the pandemic hit. So just clarification. And so, and we will know, you know, if there's a permanent closure, which will most, would most likely happen, we will notify every customer. We will notify you well in advance as we are required by the franchise and by the FCC.
Do you have, do you have a copy of that notification to the city particularly? And was it in a, in, and what kind of method of communication of notifying did you use? Did you use a legal kind of paper and with the US Mail? How did you do that? How did you notify the city? Because you are in contract. You are in legal contract with the city. And we don't take this lightly.
But Counselor Morton, can I jump in just a second? So the, the language of the agreement speaks to if the city, if, if the company relocates the office in advance. So that's a permanent action. So I, I think there has not been a notice because at this point in time, from my understanding, Comcast still has a lease for the, for the property, and that the present closure has been related to the, to the pandemic, and no notice has occurred yet. So I think what, what Tim is saying is that prior to my picking up the, the franchise to negotiate, there already had been discussion about this new language that would be in the, the new agreement. So I think the, the operation that was expected was that, well, if there's a new franchise that the city agrees to those terms, that would provide assurance to Comcast that that would be allowable, and that then at some point in time, they would follow, as Tim said, the, the federal requirement of providing that notice. So I don't think there has been notice because it has not been a permanent closure or relocation at this time.
Yeah, the one notice we did send out, but it was sent out to everybody, meaning all of our cities and counties where we have franchise agreements in, in our region, where there's about 75 of those, was when the pandemic hit and we had to close all of our stores. And we have about maybe between Eugene, Springfield, up to Longview, I'm going to guess we have maybe 10 to 12 stores total.
Are they all Comcast-owned?
They all are, with the exception of there's one in that we, it's called a branded store where they operate for us in Portland.
And there's also one down on TV Highway in Hillsborough, kind of in Aloha area. There's two of what they call a branded flagship, branded store.
What tends to happen in a case like this is when you have a brand ship, because we have a brand ship of Verizon here, is that next thing you know is we'll actually be being charged stuff that Comcast used to offer free. But it will still be charged to our Comcast bill. And they will charge it back to you. And again, bring their, your bottom line down because they're gonna make, that's kind of how, that's kind of how Verizon does it. Okay, and I'm just speaking on Verizon and and hypothetically. Again, I have to explain to you guys that you are serving probably over forty thousand people from Deer Island, Tide Creek, actually Goble, to the Scales and Scappus, beyond Scappus. That people coming here and you said seventeen people roughly coming into the store a day. I pay two hundred and twenty-four for my cable, phone and internet. I pay about two hundred and twenty-four. Seventeen, that's roughly about four thousand dollars a day coming into your store billing wise. A day, that's four grand coming in roughly, or I do two hundred, it's thirty, thirty-seven hundred or whatever. That, that, those dollars are coming in. And am I just, my one experience is that never gonna happen to anybody where you actually get a box and you find out it's not, not the box, it's actually the remote to the DVR that was messed up. And then I'm sitting here for three days waiting on a delivery like Amazon to bring me a remote. Is what it seems like sometime, is gonna happen here.
Yeah, typically, it's like an overnight service or, you know, if, you know.
Exactly, and I was able to do it the minute it happened. I went down, got a new box, plugged it in, it wasn't the box, went back, uh, bring us your remote, it's probably the remote. Oh, you have an old remote? Yeah, it is the remote. That was exactly all it was. And a modem, a modem goes down, then I'm really out.
Well, I know with, with me, so I had a personal experience with Comcast early summer. I'm a, I'm a customer myself. And so I had an issue with my modem. I called and I don't get preferential treatment. I call, go through the phone tree like anybody else. And, you know, they were able to go online, figure out what the issue is. They can, you know, look at my box and determine what, where the issue's coming from. And they said, you need to replace your modem. And I had one there within twenty-four hours. Then it had a return label for I put the old one in that, put it out on, and UPS picked it up and, and took it back. And so, in an ideal world, that's how that would work, you know, not, not all cases.
How long were you down for? How long were you down for?
Probably, I'd say thirty-six hours or something like that.
We got corporate America working out of their home in Columbia County just as well as we do in Portland, Oregon. And those are high dollars that are not able to get on to the internet because of a modem that's potentially down.
Right, a- and we take that serious and, and.
And so do I. That's why I'm standing up for our citizens right now.
And if somebody is, is, you know, down, we try to expedite that, that as soon as possible. In fact, we're required to by the FCC and even by the franchise to, to deal with that. Or there are time, time requirements where, you know, where, you know, there's an outage and we've got to respond to them within twenty-four hours.
Okay, one last thing, Tim, is you should know where your store location is here. It's not on Highway thirty. If it was on Highway thirty, your customer service would probably jump up to twenty-five to thirty a day. It's on Port Avenue.
No, I've been, I've been there.
So if you had advertisement and Comcast out on the highway, you'd have a lot more people stopping in. And probably even potentially gain a few customers just because you were on the highway.
Well, that is something, you know, that we look at. You know, and whether it's, you know, the, you know, the proposal to close the store in St. Helens is not the first one in our region. Since I've been here, I've been with the company about ten years, just under ten years.
One, one of the problems that I see, we got a number of miscommunication points. Obviously, you've been discussing this and the discussion information has not gotten to the council. So many of us were being blindsided. A number of the customers in this town are on the old side. And I'm gonna put myself in that, whose grandkids have to fix some of the stuff. They need face-to-face contact. Talking to somebody over the phone about this new scientific junk doesn't cut it. So a number of our people in this town are on the older side. So you really are throwing the customer away. And you're basing your decisions, I would say, on a younger tech savvy customer base. So you definitely are amputating a lot of our work. And the mayor is right, when you have to do business thirty-six hours. Now, I do plenty of business and sometimes my business has to be done within the hour and it's medical. So thirty-six hours doesn't cut it. If I can run down there and have somebody on the other side of the counter, give me a replacement part or tell me what to do. Because your telephone tree doesn't cut it unless you're tech savvy. But I think a biggest problem was, we didn't, we, most of the council did not get involved in this negotiations to see this thing coming.
Yeah, Steve, I agree with that and I agree with your assessment that, you know, the council was not involved at all. And we're the looks, we're looking out for our citizens. We, that's our, that's our role to protect our citizens. And our citizens, I think, are take, being taken advantage of by, by this move. And I, I can't comprehend why, why you would enter into conversations that are solely, Mr. Goodman, economic for your company. And not looking out for your citizen, your customer base that, that is so needed representatives in our community to go eye to eye, as pointed out earlier, with representatives to help them out. And it's all done by, it's all done by phone or computer or whatever. And if your modem goes out, you can't use your computer, you can't even use your phone unless you have, have another service. It, it's, it's absurd to me that you're trying to do business and come to us with a franchise agreement, a continued franchise agreement that will be ongoing. I just don't think, I just don't understand the logic of that from Comcast. And I, if, if it isn't, if you aren't the decision, the sole decision maker in this, I would take this message back to your board or back to whoever makes the decisions and tell them loud and clear that they're going to start losing customers and small, small community customers. They're, they'll go away. I mean, it, it just can't continue.
Right, the, the one thing, you know, I don't know if I've emphasized that enough during our conversation today is, you know, our technicians come to, will come to your house. If you have an issue, you know, on how to work something, they will help with that. And, and they are rated on their customer service because the customers then can do a survey on how that visit went. Were they taken care of? Were they not? And that reflects on every Comcast employees, like annual reviews and such. And so, you know, which, they'll come to your house, deliver equipment, hook it up, make sure it's working, show you how to work the remote, what, you know, whatever it may be. If it's, if it's internet only, then it would be done that way. So we, by closing this door, it's not a a decision by Comcast to abandon its customers in any means because our big, biggest initiative for the past, it's coming up on four years, has been to improve our customer service and to make that our best product. And if we didn't feel that we could provide the customer service that is warranted in St. Helens and in that area with that, by the closure at store, we wouldn't be doing it. It, yeah, and it is purely a business decision because we're not, we don't get the traffic in to, to you know, generate business and, and, and moving out to Highway thirty, you know, it, you know, it gives you a little more visibility. But we don't get a lot, we don't get people just that walk in like a typical retail store. And that just doesn't happen. You know, and, you know, some people come to our store because they're, they're either an existing customer or they're looking at becoming one, is, is typically what happens. You know, I think the numbers on, for that store, the fifty-five percent of the, the visits over that two-year period of eighteen and nineteen, fifty-five of those people were for equipment return or pickup, which we can provide through a technician or through UPS. Bill payments, five percent. And then other, which is like new service, service cancellation, general inquiries is about forty percent of the, the walk-ins. So about five people a day, roughly.
Well, I have an opinion, I have an opinion that you're doing your customer service right now. And who you're talking to represents our citizens. And that is, that is big as far as a lot of people feel because we're going to make that decision. Whether we go with Comcast or not, or continue with this, with this agreement, that you're, you folks are capable of making decisions in breach of this agreement without even contacting or working with the city. Now, you're telling me that that's customer service? Are you really serious about that?
See ya. Sorry, I had, I, we haven't, we're not in breach of our franchise. We haven't been. And if we're in breach of our franchise, you guys could, would send us a franchise violation notice. If we don't cure that, you can fine us. If we don't cure that, you can revoke the franchise and take over the system yourself.
But it says it may relocate its office outside the city boundaries, but within Columbia County. You haven't done that. That's a breach. You've gone to Longview.
No, we haven't. We are, are, we've had a store in Longview since I've been here, which is ten years.
I understand that, but you are not, you have not relocated your office within Columbia County. And it's, it's right here in the franchise agreement.
Okay, so I guess what I'm, okay, so there is a clause in an agreement that talks about force majeure, but there's something beyond our control, which is the pandemic. And because of the safety.
This was in order before the pandemic. You just stated that. You just.
We, we were, we were proposing that in the new franchise. We hadn't closed it. We were proposing that in the new franchise. And that never was, you know, we proposed that right up front when the city wanted to use the MAC, MAC template as its franchise. It is closed right now because of the pandemic, because it's not safe to have social distancing then for customers or our employees. That's why it's closed. So if we had done this without the pandemic, then, yeah, we would be in violation of our franchise agreement. We certainly would. We would have breached that. You guys would have issued a notice of violation, potentially fined us. If we didn't fix it or reopen it, then, you know, you could essentially, you could essentially revoke the franchise.
That's when I wanted, that's why I wanted the date of your letter of when it was, when it was, when they, when we, the city were notified. And I can't recall that happening. It might have happened through emails or whatever, but I'd like to know the dates of those, of that, of that notification.
Yeah, I recall when we did that because we sent it out to everybody. It was in March. So, but it's been closed because of the pandemic. No other reason. If, if it, if the pandemic had never hit, it would still be open and we'd still prob, we'd still be having these convers, same conversation we were having today. I'm gonna be totally one hundred percent honest with you. We would be upfront, we would be asking for the same thing. But the store closure now has, is totally one hundred percent due to the pandemic. No other reason.
So, Tim, I do have to say this. Prior to the governor's first freeze, you more than could have opened up that store. It has plenty of social distancing. It's a long desk. It is very spacious. I don't know, you know, what you're charged there, very spacious. The current freeze, you cannot operate under, maybe, but you can because there are actually stores doing it. And you would still be under governor's orders. And you would still be one hundred percent okay. Masks are required to come in. We do allow people to come into our water department on appointments. We ask them not to. But we still serve our citizens. So kind of, really, you are in breach of contract. If, you know, the first one and this one, maybe, maybe not. But for three months there, kind of were. Kind of were. There were a lot of other businesses operating. And I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent sure that you probably had a few stores yourself still operating. They weren't all probably shut down.
We closed them all.
Every last one of them, never been, never been open, never been.
Some of them are open, then, the big ones are open.
Point, my point exactly.
Yeah, they're not, they're significantly larger than the one in St. Helens.
And what I really hear Doug saying here is you guys talked about this year ago is what you said. Prior to the pandemic, then you said it was the pandemic. But even in that discussion, why wasn't the city at least notified that we're kind of thinking about this is where we want to go? And would like to, instead, we get through the rumor mill that this is coming down through the pipeline, that this is going out of our franchise agreement. And it feels like it was gonna be presented if we wouldn't have heard. This would have never really been brought up. Maybe our attorneys wouldn't have noticed it because it's about livability to us. So we really definitely recognize it. We feel passionate about having the store here.
So. I, 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 I understand that. And, you know. I lost my train of thought there, sorry.
Let me help. You know, the, the, I think what the mayor's getting at and what I'm getting at is the customer service aspect and how you blatantly ignored the councils, the cities that you pulled the plug on. And if you're gonna do that, then what are you going to do in your, with your customers? I mean, if you're not going to come forward to the councils and say, hey, we've got this problem. We'd like to discuss it with you. Can we, can we work this out together? No, that didn't happen, not with you guys. You just pulled the plug, left, and, and here we are. Now we've got to answer to our citizens about your decision. That does not sit right with me.
You know, so when, like I said, were it not for the pandemic, that store would be open right now. Without a doubt, it would still be open. It would still be operating. That is one hundred and ten percent the only reason that store has been closed. And we provided all of our LFAs, which we call local franchise authorities, with notification and all the things that we were working on. And I, and I don't recall, you know, I'm sure we sent the city an email, would have been back in March. I can, you know, go back and check. But as far as, you know, typically, you know, when our franchises come up for renewal, no matter where they are, you know, we work with staff, we work with in, in council, inside council, outside council, to come up with the agreement that then we then take to, that then goes to the city council for approval. So for us to get involved with you personally is something that I've never seen done, you know, during the negotiation period. We've never had a council member or mayor intimately involved in, in that process. So it's typically done at the staff or legal council level. And then that would come to, to you. And then that would come to to you. Actually, I will have to say, you know, we had gotten comments back uh from staff. Um about the concerns over the closure of the store. Uh because you guys were actually involved far sooner than most city councils and mayors are. So, you know, we've been aware of that and they asked me for additional data, so I've had to do a lot of homework trying to get information from our. Sales and marketing folks and the people who operate the stores. Okay, what kind of, you know, how many people have been going in there? What, why are they going there? If, how, if I'm a customer in St. Helens, if I need this, what can I do? You know, how can I pay my bill? You know, how how do I do? And and co- come back to your staff. Your staff has been very diligent. And being upfront with the concerns about that store. And so they have made me do my homework and Comcast do its homework to to come back with. This is why we would be closing that, you know, right now it's purely closed because of the pandemic, no other reason.
I know that, but this is after the fact. This is, we're learned, I'm learning this now. And do, what do you think when the cus- when our citizens come to us and ask us about, why isn't there a Comcast out? Well, we don't know. I think they pulled the plug. Why didn't you reach out in your customer service to the leaders in the community and tell them what's going on? Now you do it after the fact, when it's time to sign a new, when it's time to get a new franchise agreement.
No.
Get it.
I'm sure everywhere we had a store, we noted, I'm, I would assume we notified Scapuce, St. Helens and Columbia City. And and potentially even Columbia County. About what was happening because of the pandemic, meaning the closure of the store. So, you know, I am fairly certain we did that because, you know, because we have to, we're required to.
Don't, don't doubt that a bit. Don't doubt it a bit that you did that. That's not, you know, uh um. It is the livability. You can say we've been running this way already for a while. Which you have bigger stores open, and if you have seventeen customers and you have two employees working there. Boy, it really even backs my case that you could have opened up the store because you could even have. Say, please just hold on while I wipe down things, do a quick wipe with some disinfectant wipes. You you actually, your customer service could have been better to our community already. And even met governor's standards. You gave me the numbers to run on. I didn't.
But no, no.
People a day.
Right.
Seventeen people a day. You really could have wiped down, you really could have your store open, but you chose not to. So.
And that, and and that was a.
But your larger stores are open.
Under restrictions.
Yes.
Right. And because they're bigger and then we can keep people apart. You know, easier than than we in the small.
Have you been in, have you been in the St. Helen's store? You obviously have it. It's a.
I probably been in there five, six times, I guess.
It's a long walk to the, from the front door to the counter.
Right, you go in, then you go to your left and there's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, and it's very spacious inside there.
Right, well, you know, it's.
At least the size of my living room and then some.
It wasn't closed to save money. Because those people were performing some other duties and customer service. It was closed. For customer and employee safety reasons alone. No other reason.
So do you you understand, we're not also, I'm not just here representing the thirteen thousand five hundred that we have here in St. Helens. Obviously, I'm representing all of Columbia County that this would be the closest location for them to come change out. And swap a modem, a remote, a cable box. And then beyond that is to wait on you guys. Are you guys gonna do a prime delivery like Amazon Prime would? Are you gonna make? What's in the new contract? Are you saying you can have me a remote within six to eight hours of a call?
I I can't guarantee that, no.
Well, why not? Why not? Because I can wait six to eight hours. If I'm in a business meeting, I'll have to wait till eight o'clock in the morning to go get my. New stuff, if it's a a failed, equipment failure.
So.
Monday, Monday through Friday, and people are doing business Monday through Friday. So are you willing to at least Monday through Friday allow us to? Have the ability to have a six-hour delivery time?
You know, if you have a service call, typically you, we don't get anybody there till the next day unless somebody's really close. And and I think, you know, CenturyLink is there and provides broadband service. Do they have a store? In Columbia, in in Columbia County or in St. Helens?
You know, I think they're based here. Uh you know, I I don't know that they're, they, I don't know if they do have a store. And 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 again, you, CenturyLink is also, you you got cable, I got my phone. Doug's right. If I didn't have my cell phone and my cable goes down. The whole kit and caboodle. Is gone. My internet, I don't have cable TV and I do not have a landline. Period, point blank. It's all gone.
So I have, I have, I just want to get my one question answered. Are you a member of the OJUA? And do you know what that stands for?
Well, I think you mentioned earlier the Joint Utility Association of Oregon.
Yes.
And I don't know that we are. Um, I'm not familiar with that organization. Um.
They resolve, they resolve disputes like this. Like we feel that uh there is a breach. And they they resolve those disputes on behalf of the Oregon Utilities Commission. Uh, I, I was just curious if you uh, if your membership is still up to date.
I don't know if we are a member. I can certainly find out. I actually, I don't know that we are because I've never heard of it until today.
I can believe that.
Why is that?
Because, because it's an association, it's an association that, that. That actually resolves any kinds of disputes. Teaches uh industries, industrial standards. Uh works with pole usage and utilities underground uh usage. Uh they provide the training and technician uh that's outlaid by the utilities. Uh the state utilities commission. And if there's any kinds of problems with different companies. That are, that and municipalities that are somewhat un uh uh. Backed up by the uh utilities commission. That's what the Joint Utilities Commission is is all about. It just, it resolves disputes. Uh it does a lot of things.
So that would probably apply to maybe our phone service. Um, maybe. Maybe broadband, I don't know, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't have anything to do with cable television franchise.
Yes, it does.
So, um.
It does. Believe me.
Because like the PUC does not oversee cable TV. The FCC, which is a federal agency oversees cable television and the franchise renewal process and such. And I, I don't have the current franchise underneath me. There's, there's usually typically a. Um, a framework identified in that that would describe if there's a disagreement on something or. In this, in, you know, when you're talking about us having reached the franchise or something, but which we haven't. Um, but if there is something where we cannot agree upon a franchise. There is a formal process identified by the Cable Act, which. Um is a, is essentially makes this a litigated franchise, which. Um, I have gone through one of those. Uh it didn't, we were ended up able to resolve, resolve it, but that was after both parties had spent. An unconscion- inconscionable amount of money on attorneys and such because it's a very um. It hardly ever happens. You know, we've got, I don't know, six or seven thousand franchises throughout the country and it happens maybe. Once every three or four years, if you will, uh typically the larger franchises. But that's how. If we can't come to terms on a a renewal, that's the process. It's already set up that this would go to.
I have another question, uh having to do with the St. Helens facility. We have a counter and we have customers talking across the counter and doing things. We have a back room with a bunch of equipment in it, that your equipment trucks come and go. So it's a. Two-part facility. So you're closing down not only the customer facility, but where the parts and your equipment. People are. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes. Yes, so the techs that work out of there, well, and a lot of those are working from home now. I mean, they, their vans are at home now and they will still, they know. Like a day or two in advance as far as their jobs and they will. They will get um or actually under a new process where they're actually given a. A bag or a container with all the equipment they need for each job that day. Um, so there, uh, so typically they will go to one of us, which we call an FFO. And uh and we, where we fulfillment office where they get their their equipment. Uh now, because of, right now, it's not operating like it normally does because of the COVID. But it's my understanding that that stays there. But that's where they come, get their equipment. Or the equipment's delivered to them. They throw it in their vans and then they go out and install or do whatever's necessary that day.
So for customer equipment supply, we've added one more step in the supply chain. Which makes the customer one step further down in time. Just as convenience, just to close the, this particular store, which is both a depot as well as customer service. Just wanted to make that clear, uh what is being removed from here? It isn't just customer service across the counter, it's equipment service for the area. Thank you.
So, um, I want to just interject, Tim. Uh, sounds like you do not have the authority or you have the authority to say that. You are not going to budge on this part of the agreement.
That's correct. I do not have the authority and I do not have the authority to, to, to budge on that piece, yes.
Okay, because I don't think we need to really beat you up anymore than we already have, because I think you've gotten the point. Um, and we will have some decisions to make. This evening.
You know, and and the one thing is, I don't, it's okay that you guys beat me up. It's totally all right. You know, I, I would prefer you not, but it's okay that you do. The one thing I want to emphasize is that, you know. If you have an issue with Comcast, are you here of a constituent that has one? You can give them my, my number.
Okay, I got one. I got one for you. And I wasn't gonna bring this up because this is off the franchise agreement. When I first subscribed, I got the complete package other than the sports package. You have taken away Cinemax, you have taken away STARS. Then you split them up into other little channels. My bill stayed the same. And now I have to subscribe to get Cinemax or STARS. So, that being said, it was no, no notification of that. It was, it was just, it just happened. So I'm not, I was gonna stay out of that, keep this out of it. But that's what happened to me. Okay?
That's totally okay to bring it up. It's no, you know, and.
What's that all about?
What, what happens is we, you know, we're almost always in negotiations with. The pro, the people who own the programming. You know, we have our, we own our own, which is the NBC stuff and. Um, and and like USA and a couple other cable channels, but then you have. The folks, the HBOs, the Cinemax, the Showtimes and all that, and they're owned by all these other folks. And it's kind of, you know, and then we always have these programming contracts going up and what they're saying, well, we need to do this and we need to do that. And then we gotta figure a way how we can do that. And they say, if you're gonna provide this, you have to provide it this way. Very complicated. Yeah, so, so I know a little bit about it, but I'm not no expert, but.
I feel like a very small fish in a large pool, because if you guys are not willing to budge against Cinemax or Showtime, which are very big. Corporations and maybe they wanted a few more dollars and you're not gonna spend a few more dollars on the. To thirteen thousand five hundred people on, in St. Helens or forty thousand in surrounding area.
So what, so what happens, what's happened to, you know, when we, when the current franchise was. Um, was approved. You know, everything you got was in analog. And which is, you know, and then it went to digital. And then it went to our, which we call standard definition. And then it went to HD, high definition. And then, you know, there's been all these. You know, increments of improvements, uh, you know, tech, in tech, in technology. Now what's happened too is because you have so many people that are streaming. Their, what they want on video through, you know, they're getting programmed to Netflix and Prime Video and. Hulu and all of, all of these other providers to get off broadband. So then what's making all these, this programming contracts so convoluted and crazy is. They're competing, but you still have to buy their, their programming, but they want more for that. And it's just, it's a, yeah, it it's, I don't understand at all, uh and some, I don't know if I want to. But I understand that because I have, I'm doing this. I will ask, I will ask myself, why, why are we making this change?
Our business model as a city is consistency.
Right.
And there's not a lot of consistency. That's what I'm, guess I'm getting at.
Yeah. So, and and I noticed, you know, I've been, there's one of the Portland channels. Um, is they've been running one of those messages underneath the screen about. Called Dish Network because, you know, they're in contract negotiations and they're, they're coming up to a deadline and if they don't have an agreement, then that goes dark. And, you know, fortunately with Comcast and then in almost ten years I've been there, we've never had to do that. We've come up to where we were within twenty-four hours of like a potential issue, but we always extended or we came to an agreement and kept providing. But, you know, the cost for that programming stuff goes up every year. You know, it's gone up. I think this year it was like twenty-eight percent of our programming cost, what we have to pay for the programming that we provide.
See, I won't have a person I can go to and talk to, so that's why you got that question. You know, and and I do have your number, Tim.
But seriously, if, you know, if if somehow, you know, Matt or Dawn or somebody could give you guys my direct. My direct, uh, it would be cell phone number and email address.
We're fortunate, we're fortunate, but somebody that calls somebody um and talks to. Um, sometimes customer representatives are maybe in Seattle or down south. And here, you hear the the southern twang in their voice. Sometimes they're not even in the country. I don't know if that's you guys, but sometimes when I call, they're not even in the country.
Right.
And um. Sometimes you don't feel like you're being heard, like when you're face to face or even on a computer screen like this.
Right, well, my.
Are you guys gonna, are you guys gonna offer something like this?
You know, my point is, my point is.
Customer representation that somewhere where I could see somebody face to face. I think that's, I think it's a key model. I'm just throwing out things, maybe I can help you guys out.
I would, I would love the fact if somebody could call and get a live voice immediately. I'm, I'm pro customer service. And, you know, and I guess my point by saying that if somebody, if one of your constituents calls you. And they have an issue with us, give them my name and phone number and my, or my email and. I'll get back to them immediately or maybe even answer the call. And that's what I'm saying. You know, I'm just trying to throw that out there, you know, and just saying, you know, that we're trying, you know, I'm. Comcast that you know. And I just want to make it available that I'm available and we have, you know, and we try to jump on things as soon as we hear about them. In fact, I complained about our car, our, our calling system. Like two days ago, because I felt we could do better.
Yeah, like when you give a tone on a TV, put a phone number with it. Instead of just a code. It's just a code. Um.
Can I say one last thing?
Yes, you may. Yeah.
And and I was, you know, I've been working with, with John and Matt and then Bill uh on this. And um would really like to express um my thoughts around. They have been really, really great to work with. They have, they've been looking out for the interest of the city. They have, uh, well, how I put this, put me through the wringer more so than most cities do. And and not in a bad way, but looking out for the city and its, its residents. So I just want to express that and they've been very professional throughout the whole process.
Hey, thank you, Tim.
You bet.
All right. Okay, so uh we're gonna, we'll talk about this uh later. We'll have it on tonight's agenda. Um, so let's go on to our. Um, so let's go on to our next item, which is Enterprise Zone Sponsor Request. Paul Vogel, CCEP Direct Executive Director. Maybe.
Get all the stuff turned on, can you see?
There he is. Yeah, I can see it now, Paul.
Not, not that you should want to, but um I do have for you and and thank you uh to city staff for for facilitating, getting this for the council. It's a, it's a request for the City of St. Helens, uh City Council as a zone sponsor of the South Columbia County Enterprise Zone to uh to authorize uh an application by Cascade's Tissue, the Scapoose Plant uh for a new enterprise zone exemption. This would be for uh expansion of two, two new lines at uh at that plant, twenty-one employees. Uh and they do uh meet and exceed the payroll requirements for a five-year exemption. Um, the reason this is before you, a three-year, a three-year application could just be processed administratively, this is, they're asking, asking for five years. Um, and so uh they uh they have to meet a hundred fifty percent of the the annual covered wage profile for Columbia County, which they do, actually exceed it by quite a bit. And uh as I mentioned, this would be twenty, twenty-one additional jobs. And um we have been through all the steps, we've uh we've met with them, uh we've worked through their application with them. I've conferred with the state Enterprise Zone Director, I conferred several times with the County Assessors uh manager for enterprise zones and um we uh we believe it's a, it's a, it's a great sign is the, is Cascade's tissue and I, I, you, I don't need to go into a bunch of background about them. They're going through a bit of a reorganization and they wanted to uh uh we actually helped uh the Scapoose Plant compete for this um uh for this business because they could have put it in three or four different places in North America, so we're pleased that they want to expand here and um uh and so we're requesting uh City St. Helens is is actually the first of the sponsors that we're approaching. We'd uh request authorization.
So Paul, is this uh, this, this is a brand new uh application, but does it extend their other application?
No, sir. Um, their their other application, I think expires in twenty-three. Uh twenty twenty-three, this one um would, looks like it would probably, let's see, twenty-one, twenty-six. So no, it doesn't, it doesn't extend that one, that one drops off. This is a fresh and and but because they have that other exemption and because both St. Helens and Scapoose operations are in the same zone, they actually have to meet a higher threshold for this exemption in terms of jobs. They have to, they have to uh they have to exceed um ten percent new job creation, so that's why they uh that's why that was important. Twenty, so twenty-one new jobs, I think they've got about a hundred ninety-six employees currently in the two locations. So this is a new one, it doesn't, it doesn't extend the old one, that one drops off, this one goes forward.
And this one doesn't include any other piece of the process or anything like that? This is only for the, for the new stuff, right?
This is, yes, two new lines. That's about fourteen million dollar investment.
Paul, they are counting the St. Helens uh employees uh as a total employee uh group, is that correct?
Yes, the state requires that, uh the statutes require that. It's because both uh both locations are in the same enterprise zone. It's the total employment that has to be counted, so they have to exceed that by ten percent. Or they they have to create ten percent above that uh in order to qualify for a five-year exemption.
I got a real, I got a very simple question. How does St. Helens benefit from this? How does the city of St. Helens benefit from us signing this? The city, us.
Well, uh as as a, well, it's it's part of being a zone sponsor for a a zone that includes all, all of St. Helens and and most of the, most of South County. Um, so it's it's part of zone sponsorship, uh and that's, you know, uh the uh I don't know where their their employees would live, but uh but Scapoose processes product that St. Helens produces. And so they're complementary mills and so it's, it's, it's inter, they're, they're interconnected. Um, but but really it's uh in terms of the city itself. Um, it's, it's that uh, it's those intangibles, plus there is a percentage of the, there's an application fee that goes into the Betterment Fund that uh that goes to partially support uh CSET's management and uh and is shared by the City of St. Helens.
So it basically accents the business that we have here, is what, what I hear you saying, kinda assures that this is the raw tissue goes up there to be processed.
Yeah, that's, yeah, there, there, there are a couple ways that they're all interconnected and then it comes down to, there, there's actually a uh, you know, the Betterment Fund benefit, but uh then these, these tax, these taxes go on the county rolls and
And twenty, twenty-one good paying jobs in our area.
Yes, sir.
Question on the twenty-one jobs, is that, is this the firming or whatever? Does it guarantee those twenty-one people will be uh still employed to the end of this period or could they start off and get legal at twenty-one in two years and go down to five?
Uh it's actually, they, they actually have to create those twenty-one in the first year and report on their employment levels going forward.
And if the employment levels go down, do they lose the enterprise?
They, they, they lose, yes, they, they, there may be a graduated um uh a graduated scale, but but yeah, their, their, their benefits decrease um as a result. Um, they, if they took, if they took a huge hit in employment, they might lose the entire exemption. Yeah, there, there is an annual report that has to be produced, uh verifying employment.
And they have to perform according to the agreement, otherwise, okay, thank you.
All right, this sounds a pretty, pretty, pretty basic, pretty simple. Um, would like to give you an opportunity to respond. I don't know if you heard Brady Prehans comment, if you'd like to, it's totally up to you.
Well, sure, no, I, I, I did and it actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and it gives me an opportunity to to just talk about the uh uh the uh the Port Westford Rezone a little bit. Um, so uh when we, when the CSET board voted unanimously in favor of of the rezone application and the remand uh component of that, um I was asked to put together material, so I gathered a lot of material from people and put together our, our, our letter uh of support to the County Commission and and also materials encouraging CSET members and others to do that. And the information I was given was that one of the original opponents and it's just, I think we, many of us know him, Mike Sealy, uh was no longer opposing this. Uh, we didn't say supported him, I would not support it, I wouldn't suppose that, but that he's no longer opposing it, which was our understanding. Uh, so some concern was raised about that and uh and so I called Mike. Uh, and uh we talked about it and he, you know, he's pretty clear, he says, I don't, don't oppose industry, I don't oppose a lot of, a lot of the stuff here, I get along great with a lot of the folks out here, I do have some concerns about some of the stuff that the port thinks they might do. Uh, uh, and as a reason, but it's basically, it's complicated. I said, Mike, look, we're just gonna take that bullet out. It doesn't, it's not material to our position, supporting the rezone. Don't wanna create any issues for you, it's just unnecessary to be there. So we have removed that bullet and actually, I think it may be in your, in uh in the draft letter for the council and it's the third bullet, we just took it out cuz it's complicated and it doesn't change our support for it, so we just wanted the council to know, we followed up on that. Um, it was uh it, it's not even inaccurate necessarily, it's just complicated with Mike's, got a lot of feelings about this issue, so uh anyway, we just wanted to remove the, remove the uh uh remove the issue entirely, we took the bullet out and uh and that's, that's, that's pretty much that and we, you know, we, we regret any, any misinterpretation that came out of that.
Hey, I appreciate that.
I do have two quick updates if I could.
Yeah.
One of them, very, very fresh, um and actually, uh one of them, an appeal to to you all, maybe. We uh, we have completed all the award uh notifications for round four, the small business grants, about three hundred seventeen thousand five hundred-ish dollars went to St. Helen's Small Businesses, forty-four businesses. Um, about ninety-eight, I think, applications overall. Problem is, almost half of our awards have not been responded to, so people have to send back a signed form verifying so that we can write them a check. Almost half have not done that yet and so yeah, if you, if anyone knows anyone, or if the city can get the word out, we started, we started hammering that really hard this morning. Um, we need to, we need to write these checks, otherwise we have to give the money back to the state, so
Absolutely.
St. Helens businesses did really well in this, the good applications and and uh well over half the money uh went to St. Helens businesses. That said, uh in a meeting this morning, um CSET is contracting with the county to help move, uh they're almost a million dollars they're getting in their allocation for this, from the state. So that's a pro, that's a grant program we're starting with that has not been stood up yet, we're, we got a meeting in about twenty-five minutes to try and hammer all that stuff out, but uh wanted to give you uh early, early notice that um another grant round will be coming out, uh the county gets to kinda set the parameters, this won't be state mandated. Although the federal guidelines and some state guidelines, but types of bu- businesses that are eligible and that sort of thing, the county has more of a hand in. And it's about nine hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars that we're gonna have available. So um let, let folks know about that because we have to, we have to make those awards by December thirty-first, it's gonna be, it's a run and gun.
So we would definitely help advertise that the, the um you, how, three hundred seventeen thousand dollars is what you said, three, three one seven?
Three one seven five four zero is from round four.
Yeah, and how many businesses were awarded?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
We, we had a hundred and one applicants, um over five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars total. And uh three hundred seventeen thousand of that was St. Helens businesses, forty-four.
This is money they're gonna use if they don't have to pay back because they were, they met the threshold.
These are grants.
Yes, so we will definitely, uh I know John wants to chime in, so I heard him just a minute ago, so I'm already in here, but we will definitely have Crystal put something on our webpage saying, if you applied, you qualified, the money's waiting and it has to be spent, it has to.
Yeah, we, we need to write those checks soon.
Yeah, yes.
I, I hate sending money back to the state.
Yes, yes. John, did you wanna comment?
Yeah, just a couple of quick, quick things. One of them is that you do have a letter in, in your council meeting pack tonight for for acceptance there and it is, does have that third bullet point in there, it's also set up for my signature and it could be equally be the council as a whole or the mayor. Um, it was just a draft for your consideration there. And then the other issue was that, just on this issue of supporting and, you know, enterprise zone applications and other, enterprise zones is one of the few tools we have in Oregon to really do economic development incentivizing this region, so, or in the state, so it's difficult to compete with other states and with only one tool, it's uh good, good to support it. And and add also the, like things such as our urban renewal agency, when those enterprise zone benefits come on, come back on the tax rolls like they are with, by the first phase of the Cascades right now, that just lights up the the agency, so. Investment that comes online a few years later and it's all good, so.
That's where we benefit. So uh, yes, good point. Paul, uh thank you for your presentation. Any other council members wanna have a question for Paul? Is Paul still on here?
I'm still on.
Okay, yeah, and we, we look forward to, you know, we're, our enterprise zone is also part of, it's in an opportunity zone.
Yes, it is. And I, I've been having some conversations with some opportunity zone experts that are, that are out of uh uh an organization in, in Portland, we're supposed to talk on the eleventh, I think.
And for the right person and also
Under, are, are, are miss, are under understood and
Exactly.
Market it very well.
And not only that, it falls within our urban renewal and and we have some liability or some availabilities to do certain things with our urban renewals within that parameter, so lots of wiggle room there.
Oh, Paul, could, could you, when you get all that information about uh opportunity zones, can you maybe write up a summary and distribute it?
Sure, uh not only a summary, I, I'd like to kinda repackage how we even talk about it here because all we have is a paragraph and I had to kinda go to school on it and, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. Paul, thank you for your report, very informative, appreciate it.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Okay, our next item on our agenda is Bennett Building Improvement Updates, Matt and Jenny.
Great. Matt, did you wanna tee this off?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna tee it off right back to you.
Okay.
So you should have uh ability to share your screen, Jenny. Um, so counsel, as you are aware, we've been um working with, and Jenny's been working with a company that does design and build for the Bennett Building next door, it's the utility billing and uh municipal court office right now. Um, as you can see in the picture right there, we did some initial upgrades when we did the internal um of the utility billing side updates with new carpets, new counters, all that kinda stuff. And we put these windows up here in place because we were replacing a, a little or you guys can't see where I'm pointing on my cursor. Um, the uh uh top right side, there were, there were, there's a board, there used to be like an old AC unit there. Uh, and that was removed when we did the renovations and then that led to, well, we're gonna have to, if we do that, we have to replace the windows, which we didn't have any other original glass windows, so it was like, well, we can't just put one thing there, it's gonna look totally weird. And so then we we decided, oh, well, we better replace the whole top and then it was, well, why would we replace one side and not the other? A- and so it kinda went into what you see here. Um, and it was not originally in the original scope that I had identified with Roger uh through the process and a couple of the planning commission members um know the history of this building. Uh, and they were a little upset about the choices that were made for the windows that were chosen, so uh Jenny's been working diligently with a design firm that um has uh several options and we would like to talk with you about what the, um what we're describing as the first phase um for us to do some of the exterior work um to, for this uh building right here, so I will hand it off to Jenny to
Matt, I just wanna clarify for anybody listening, cuz you touched on most everything, but the reason this is a hot topic is, 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 is it is a historical building. Uh, you look at the pictures and you're like
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch on that.
We, we wanna touch on that, it is not a historic building on our, on our there's some clarification, it is, it is a building in the historic district. It did not make the final approved list of a historic building designation um in the city and that's part of the discussion with the planning commission um that Jenny can go into.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, so Matt kind of sorta touched on the history, you know, normally exterior modifications to buildings within our Riverfront District go to our planning commission, acting as the Historic Landmarks Commission for Architectural Review for compliance with our guidelines and that was sort of skirted with this process largely due to how Matt described this kinda snowballing effect that happened with um the interior modifications. Um, so, you know, we're left with the original windows being replaced um kind of prematurely. Um, and so now we're trying to kind of correct that. So the replacement windows that you see here, the white windows above the storefront windows um have a number of architectural discrepancies from the original. Um, and so we hired Archiform, um which is a, an architectural firm specializing in historic preservation to do a kind of a master plan for the entire exterior facade. Um, and they also included cost estimations for each component of that. So as Matt alluded to, you know, we think windows should be kind of the first phase. Um, but I just wanna touch on briefly um future phases so that you're um aware of those. So I'm gonna pull up, um, can you guys see this new picture? Okay, cool. So this was a drawing that Archiform put together, it's kind of the existing conditions and I'll talk about why these windows here look a little bit different. Um, but Archiform prepared um a scope of work that we've divided into phases. So future phases include um replacement of some broken tile um along the, the brown part of the, the brown bottom part of the facade. Um, they also noticed that there's dry rot in this cornice on top of the transom windows. Um, so at a future phase, we'll replace that cornice. Um, and then at the parapet at the top, um there's some misinstallation where they didn't wrap the flashing around the side of the roof. So you'll notice there's a lot of birds that nest up there right now and there may be some water that's getting in there that shouldn't. Um, and so they quoted us for what it would cost to actually do that right. Um, in my conversations with Roger, he may be able to do that work in-house. Um, but that's something that we, um, should probably do when we do future phases of remodel. Um, we also talked about how we could reduce the entry from two doors down to one in the future. Um, it ended up being a lot more costly than we initially anticipated due to some structural, um, components of the building. And so we've pushed that off to future phases when we deal with the interior remodel, um, that may come at a later date. Um, so like Matt mentioned, all this work on the exterior is too costly to do all at once. And so we're focusing on just replacement of the transoms at the top here and then the storefront windows. My thought is if they're coming out with, um, scaffolding and they're doing one window replacement for the transoms, we might as well. Uh, utilize them at the same time to do the storefront windows. So Roger pointed out that these storefront windows, there's nothing wrong with them except that they're not safety glass. So if, um, one breaks, they're gonna shatter into thousands of pieces, which is not ideal for your court department. Um, and utility billing, honestly. Um, so. The proposal is to replace those with safety glass. Um, they're keeping, they're matching the exact same historic, um, size. And they're able to utilize.
On gas bill.
Um, they're able to utilize the existing, um, metal, uh, window blocks. And so they're really just replacing the glass on the storefront. So more dramatically, the, the transoms will go from, um. What was installed prematurely, this like white fiberglass back to something that is more historically accurate. Um, so there'll be wooden replicas with true divided light, which, um, both Jacob and I learned through this process. What true divided versus, um, false divided light is for windows. Um, and likely these windows will include what's called textured glass. Um, and this is something that historic photos show those windows having. Um, they were never fully see-through in some historic photos. And so going back to that, it also cuts down on. Um, glare and since these are east facing windows, uh, it'll help with glare in the mornings. Um, it'll still let lots of natural light through. Um, and as an example, I'll pull over. What textures look like? So that's some examples of the different textured, um, windows for the transoms. So the budget for all of the windows to be replaced is just under forty thousand. Um, we're hoping that you will authorize tonight, John, to sign off on the, um, the work order. Um, I'm bringing these different textures to the planning commission at their next meeting to talk about which one makes the most sense. For the transoms. But are there any questions about any of this?
Well, this, uh, amount of money that's installed or just the, uh.
That's everything. Yeah. It's demolition, it's removal, it's travel, it's putting up plywood while they're not. In use, it's all of that.
Now, on the safety glass, is that thermopane or just good safety glass?
Um, I have the specific language they use. It said it was two, let me see, annealed glass, two layers of annealed glass.
Okay, so it is a thermopane, just two layers.
Yeah. They said it would be more energy efficient than what we have now.
Okay, that was the question.
So I have a question about the budget, uh, and the budget string on this. What, what fund is this coming out of?
So this mainly will come out of the utility funds, uh, mainly because utility billing office operates five out of five days of the week. Got there. Um, a very small portion will come from the general fund because right now municipal court operates in there. Um, however, they only utilize the building once, once a week mainly, um, other than the two staff that are there. But it'll mainly come from the enterprise funds, so water, sewer and storm and streets, um, proportionately. And then a small amount from the general fund.
Okay, did the, uh, budget committee, uh, uh, last year, uh, include this amount? In a, uh, in some kind of contingency fund or is it, is it, uh? Is it something that, uh, was, is anticipated in terms of a budget string?
I don't believe we talked specifically about this during the budget time. Regarding this particular project, however, there are plenty of funds in contingency in those enterprise funds if it needs to be utilized. Um, depending on when the cost comes up for this, for this budget, when the invoices come to me.
Okay, thanks for answering that.
So Jenny, what was, of all the phases, what's the total budget that we're looking at?
Yeah, for the exterior of the building, um, we were looking at. Let's see, I think it was around two hundred thousand if I'm not mistaken, Matt. Does that sound right?
Uh, that sounds roughly about right. I think Jenny broke it up into three different phases. Um, this first phase being kind of what we really needed to get done to kind of get past the windows thing. Uh, and then we have some really great ideas and proposals for what the inside lobby area would look like. Um, if we did, you know, stick with two doors or if we did want to spend the extra money and go with one door. Um, and, and so it gets proportionately, um, more expensive as the phases go on. Um, but it was important, I think, for us to phase, put it into phases. That way, if we did one and then we didn't want to move forward in the future. Um, we didn't have to spend two hundred thousand dollars or whatever it may be.
And I would add, ArchiForm didn't have their subcontractor out for the parapet replacement. So they really just were looking at photos and it takes coming out and actually physically looking at the site. So we got a pretty large range. Um, but the windows is the most accurate quote and so that's what we feel most comfortable moving forward on.
So the.
Yeah.
The windows, does it include already the rebate from windows? Cause we should be able to get rebates on some of those windows from PUD.
Oh, energy efficient rebates?
Yep.
I haven't looked into that. I will, I will make a note.
We should actually qualify. Yeah.
Okay.
You'll be surprised at, for window cost, what it takes off the actual cost of the window itself. It's amazing.
Yeah, I, I can definitely give Jenny the contact for if she doesn't have it for PUD to look at those.
Okay.
Yep.
Jenny, in the, in the old picture, it shows a tile cap on the parapet. And the picture that's on the screen right now just shows a brick edge. What is it?
No, no, those tiles will stay. It's really just about the flashing. It's removing of the tile, redoing the flashing that was done incorrectly. So that water can't get in there and birds can't get in there and then putting the tiles back. Yeah. Yeah.
Cause, cause that's a piece of historic stuff that's hard to redo.
Yeah, those are kind of cool. Um, the folks that came out, um, took a lot of photos while they were up there.
That was gonna be my question. Now, what was, uh, in the beginning of my, my Matt's presentation and I chimed in about the historical. What did you guys find out on this?
Sure. So we have a historic district, as you know, but we also have a list of historic landmarks. And that's our locally designated list. You might remember a couple of months ago, we added. Uh, we actually added a property to that landmarks list. Um, the property up here. Uh, what is that on? First, second, just over the hill here, they were having some sewer issues. And so they, we added them as a landmark in order to let them allow use as residential. Um, but this is not a, a listed landmark. So that was the distinction. There's different review processes for both.
Okay.
Yeah, other, other examples of landmarks are like the old school is a landmark. Um. You know, the plaza is a landmark. The county, the original county courthouse is a landmark.
The Klondike is a landmark too as well, right?
I'd have to look. I don't have them memorized.
Good to keep in mind too, um, mayor and council about the future use of this building. Um, obviously we're always hurting for space here at city hall. Um, we're talking about a new police station. Um, when that actually gets built. Um, and you know, the idea right now with staff is that building, planning and engineering. Would move into this building, um, if we were able to build a new police station. Um, and then that would free up space at city hall for more offices that are needed. Um, but. I think it's important for you to understand that we are, our intention is to keep this building and keep using this building right now. Um, and we don't have an answer for, you know, what city hall will be in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Um, so this is a, a good opportunity to do these updates with the intention that more departments will be utilizing this building in the future.
Well, just go ahead and start a rumor now. Rumor has it, McMinimum is going in there.
So, uh, that was my concern is, is if, you know, I, I think we, you know, I mean, it's a nice building. But I'm sure, I'm very familiar with old buildings. You, you opened one crack and now you've opened a hundred cracks. So, but my concern is, is if we do remodel it and spend a lot of money, we need to make sure that. It can be used for other purposes. Say, you know, in case it came up for sale someday, that, you know, retail could go in there or offices. Or whatever the case would be. Cause, uh, anyway, just wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, that's also why we're holding off on interior discussions too. Any other questions?
Nope, I don't see any.
Great. Matt will bring it up, uh, tonight for authorization then.
Alright, thanks Jenny.
Thank you.
Hey, our next item is a discussion of city properties to potentially be sold. Jacob, Sue, Matt.
Give me one second to let Jacob and, uh, come on board. You should have a couple of pages in your packet, uh, that include a list of, I believe, seven properties. As well as a map showing, uh, the parcels areas, tax lots of those. List. So this is kind of a, um, go back. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we came back to you with a list. Of all the properties that the city of St. Helen's owned. Um, it was marked up by Sue and Jacob regarding what properties could potentially be sold now. Um, so this is kind of a final list of how in, in asking and process of how you would like to move forward. With the staff identified properties that we would look to sell. Um, so that would mean, do we wanna, and this probably goes into more of a discussion that, uh, John is probably more appropriate to have. As far as does the city council want to hire a real estate broker? Do, and how do we want to sell these properties basically? Uh, and if the seven that we have shown here are properties that you want to sell. Some of them are fairly open and could be easily developable. A couple of them are pretty specific where there's at least one. Property that probably only the adjacent owner would want to buy if anybody. So Sue and, uh, Jacob are, should be available for questions. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I don't know if John, if you wanted to preface with anything.
Matt, could you put those up on the screen?
Yeah, give me one second.
And I'll add that some of those, if an adjacent property does not want them. The best practice may be to dedicate them as public right of way.
Can you see the list of properties?
Yep.
One through seven. Um, and so there are comments from Sue and Jacob, um, on the far right. And then next several pages are where those actual properties are. Obviously, we're probably well familiar with the hospital property, uh, that was just recently rezoned. Um, we have property number two, which is the tax lot here, um, just on twelfth street. Another property located on tenth street. These three parcels together off of Sixth Street and Old Portland Road. This parcel on Third Street near John Gumway. This property. That is located near city hall. This is probably one of those properties here that's on the bluff, uh, that are probably, if that owner doesn't want. This piece of property, as Jacob mentioned, just making it a right of way.
That one, um, if they don't want it, that, well, there's two parts. Do we want to sell it or because it is adjacent to the future waterfront property? And we know that we're going to subdivide if that would just be included in the totality of that property? Yes.
Yes.
Uh, and that is actually, does that already have a residence on it, that lot?
The, yeah, the challenge of this is you just see a little polygons in a map.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, do you have very good context and not really, but yes, there is a, um, home. On the larger adjacent lot. Um, it is four forty South Second Street.
Okay.
Jacob, if I combine the little weird piece, the rectangle and the adjacent lot, would that be big enough to put a commercial, uh? Restaurant on it?
On the one that's on the screen currently?
Uh, on all, no, the three combined. Now that one that you had that funny weird shape, the two properties next to it.
Okay, well, let's.
Go back to, next to the waterfront. Go back to that piece on the waterfront. That one right there. Good. There are three properties, the green one and the two next to it.
Oh, I see. Um, well, the problem is those properties, all three, all three are zoned apartment residential. And so the, the zoning gods see that as residential. In, in the apartment residential zone, there are some non-residential uses. Um, but. Probably it would be difficult, um, although it would be quite a nice sight for it. Um, for non-residential use. Not impossible.
So legality or change is the problem, not, not the location or the material of the property.
Yeah, you would, you would have to change the zoning, um, and the owners of the homes on both of those. Probably wouldn't take too kindly to that. Because any zoning, well, if you, if you apply the adjacent zoning that the old veneer property it has. Um, it says no to normal seat detached, single family dwellings unless they are, uh, designated landmarks. Which means that they are destroyed, they can't be rebuilt.
Can you take your, can you take your cursor and point out that small lot that was eliminated in blue where it is on those green trees?
Um, you probably can't see my cursor.
Yes, I can. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you can't.
Well, it's, it's my cursor, Jacob.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like, wow, magic.
And also to note that that little parcel, the little blue outline parcel where the cursor is going around. That is a, a steep embankment. It's not, it's not flat right there.
That, that was the point, Sue. You could make an elegant restaurant with the altitude change within the building. A regular house would be a pain. I, I want to make an upscale restaurant and be different. That's where I wanted that cliff in the building. But if, you gotta go through legal hoops because it's described as residential. Because more of a legal problem than a mechanical problem.
Yeah, there, there would be the legal hoop. Really, the, the question here is, you know, does the city. Want to control that portion of the bluff? Or not? And if you do, you retain ownership of it and just include it, um, with future parcels. Uh, that are, um, below the bluff.
You know, I think with our, um. I can't see a reason to not keep it other than it cleans it up. I mean, it does clean it up nicely. But, uh, I think with, uh, coverage purposes down the road, it'd be smart probably hold on to that. We have to follow our own rules as far as lot coverages and that could come into play.
Could be handy.
Yep. What about the sixth street? Those, those ones look Todd, hodgepodgey. I want to know more about the staff recommendation on those. Yeah.
So the, these are, um, extra funky, as you can see. These are technical terms I'm using in the planning profession. So it's, it's similar to as we described with the other one. Um. So, let me get. So, let me get to that page here on my own. So, um, the portion, the rectangular portion, it's kind of like a razor blade edge, um, to the south of the little Sixth Street thing. That could be sold to the property, uh, to the south of that. Um, and then the triangle on the right side of Sixth Street could be sold to, um, the two adjacent lots.
Okay, Matt's got it. Matt, Matt's got him up for us. Are you seeing him? Are you seeing the real time?
I'm seeing Matt's, yeah.
Yeah, and he was pointing in the little areas there. Um, now, let me ask you this. If we ever go to a rezoning of tiny homes, would that be potentially on each side of the street be one house?
Well, you have to look at what kind of sizes you're dealing with. Um, you know, the, the triangle on the left is just under two thousand. Um, and the one on the north is, um, about the same.
Yeah, and, and, uh, yeah, the one on the, on the west side, westish side closest to Old Portland Road, that's also, it's got like a ten foot elevation drop from one side to the other, too.
I was gonna say, isn't there a rock wall right in the middle of that lot?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think much would fit on there.
No, and so we, in, in, in my comments, um, that, um, that triangular portion should be dedicated as right of way. And then, um, the other ones that abut those lots, they could be useful, those properties. As you know, we're talking about duplex rules and potentially allowing two dwelling, two dwellings on a parcel. And, uh, the more building envelope you have, the greater opportunity you have to do that. So those, those parcels may be of value to those adjacent property owners. Um, but i- if they don't want them, um, and you want to clean things up, they could just be dedicated as a right of way. What we wouldn't want to happen is for those to be in a, a different ownership. And then you have someone who got this hot deal on a two thousand square foot lot, and they want to do something with it, and we have to give them bad news.
It'd be a great place to put an arc thing or something like that for the city.
It would. And so that's, that's a good point. You know, maybe you retain the land or dedicate it as right of way, um, for another public purpose such as aesthetics.
Would there be any reason that we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot giving that away? Like with turnabouts and just the, the whole intersection. I know there's cliffs there, I get that. But, um, it could be reconfigured maybe even a little bit to Sue, I'm talking to Sue specifically, of course.
Yeah.
Um, to square it up to Old Portland Road.
Uh, yeah, that, that's definitely one of the things that we had chatted about with, with Jacob is with retaining it with as right of way, you certainly have more options of being able to reconfigure that. So just like what you said, square it up a little bit, um, you know, try, try to normalize that. There's obviously some challenges there with elevation and grade differences, but it, it would give more options for those types of things to look into them.
Yep.
One of the disconcerting things on this map is it shows Fifth Street as a golded street. That's wetlands right there. On the west side of Old Portland Road.
Okay. You're talking about the little sliver there. Yep. And the, and Fifth Street itself or Seventh Street, actually, I think is what you're talking about.
Yeah, could be it. But it's a big hole to the west of that.
Yeah, there's a right of way, but there certainly is no street.
There's utilities through there though.
So I think those two, we've already decided we don't want to sell. We want to keep as right of, right of ways for our, would the rest of them look like they potentially could be, what were your notes on the rest of them?
Uh, you want to talk about those?
Yeah.
I spoke too soon.
So Jacob, I don't know if you want to talk about the first one, which is, uh, well, the first one is Millard Road. Um, so we're all pretty familiar with that property.
Yes, and we, and we've had an appraisal and that, that would be another thing. We'd have to have these appraised, correct?
Well, and that's part of the process for how you want to move forward. Um, for, I know John had, has had some discussion with, you know, potential developers that are interested. The city has received an offer from a current developer that wanted to develop on that property. Um, so we could easily go out for like an RFP or something, or, um, to enlist some of those opportunities for something that is pretty simple like the Millard Road property. Um, and John, I don't know if you wanted to.
There, I see two big questions. There are two major questions in this discussion. And one of them's, you know, what are we gonna sell? And the other one's, how are we gonna go about the process of selling it? And, uh, you know, that how, some, some cities that I'm familiar with have, they go through a process to select the real estate agent to recognize that the, the power of the multiple listing service. You know, work through an agent essentially, and they go through a process to, uh, secure an on-call person that does property sales for the city. Um, or we can do it other, other ways too. We can advertise ourselves, try to, try to go it alone, but. So, yeah, that, that's.
Well, the Millard Road property would definitely be something that you'd want a little bit of assistance with maybe as far as, I mean, it's a big chunk and it'd be a long, longer process. But the other little ones, I was just looking at, like the North Tent one that where our storm was, that's been decommissioned. That one's ready to develop right now. If somebody wanted to come in and probably pound a little rock.
But yeah, the South, South Tent, there's, yeah, there's two lots there that are completely developable now.
Yeah.
And the one, the one that was just right above on, on, um, South 12th Street, that's probably developable. There's a sanitary sewer line that runs along the south property line from 12th Street back to the back property line. And then there's a storm drain line that runs across diagonally across the, um, the northeast corner of the lot. But there's still a building envelope in there and, um, probably the storm could be relocated so it was no, more, um, normal to the property lines and increase the building envelope a little bit as well.
So I have a financial question. Uh, are the monies assumed from these sales earmarked? Or do they go into the general fund? Or where do they end up?
Typically, it goes to the general fund.
Thank you.
I would note on this particular property, that, that larger property just to the east of this one, that's, looks like it's three lots, our, our local wetlands inventory map does show a wetland on that property that potentially is also on this lot for sale. So any purchaser would be, um, recommended to do a, a wetland determination with the state to determine if there's a wetland or not, and then, uh, work from there.
Sure. And the city's had that forever. I mean, is that the only reason? I mean, we didn't inquire because it was wetland? It's just something we had because of trunk line work too? Does that sound right?
Yeah, we've had it for as long as I've known, as long as I've been here. I know that it was probably about eighteen, nineteen years ago, we, we, um, redid part of the sewer line across that because the sewer also used to run diagonally across the lot that would have prohibited building on it. But we straightened it out so it ran down the property line, but that's, that's was a long, long time ago. So I don't know how or when the lot was acquired, if, if we got it because of the utilities that crossed it or what the story was there.
So what I'm here. Make it a, uh, little neighborhood park, then we don't worry, have to worry about the wetlands. The kids can play in the mud.
So what I'm, from city council is that the property that I have on my screen right now, the three parcels, we would like to keep that along with this little chunk right here and keep that.
Correct.
But move forward with selling the other properties.
Yeah, that flag shaped one, where is that one at?
Yeah, we should talk about those.
Yeah, we don't want to sell them.
Yeah, that, that's our parking lot. We don't want to sell that.
It is, it is adjacent to the parking lot.
Yes.
But we don't own the actual parking lot.
No.
Uh, half of the parking lot is in the right of way.
Yeah, and, and, and we own a purse, a portion of that.
Yes.
So I would definitely say we do not want to, I mean, parking's been an issue, a hot, hot item.
Yeah, we, we brought that specifically to improve that parking lot back there.
I'll tell you what, you get up three stories right there and you got a river view. Just so everybody knows, you do have a river view. You got three stories. You can actually be on our roof at City Hall and look back over there and see that lot plain as day.
Yeah.
Yep.
But like you say, parking's a premium and it's gonna, it's not gonna get any better. Guarantee you.
That one definitely we wouldn't want to sell. And then the, uh, the other, I think the other ones, in my opinion, that one there.
That, that one's adjacent to the one we just talked about.
This one is?
Yeah.
Yep, so you have this, this is the flag one that was on, and this is the other one.
So that's odd.
So that's kind of this one right in here.
A little shed there.
Yeah.
Yep. So this and then the flag lot.
Was that donated, that little lot there, or why is the shed on it?
I think the shed, um, predates the creation of the lots. Cause those lots were created in early two thousands.
Oh, for, cause of the, the, the school being broke up.
Yeah, there was some replating. It was before my time. I don't know much about it, but I, I know the plat.
So those came up for sale and, uh, Don Cowberg, the judge bought them. And then he, he bought them, so then he offered them to the city so that we would have them to increase that parking lot.
Interesting.
Okay, so.
I was just looking at that though. How do we get the parking to line up there to, for all that to mesh together? Engineering, Sue?
Oh, would we?
Yes, there, I mean, there's just enough room there for a car between the lots there, the.
Oh, I think there's more, I think there's more room than what it looks.
The front lot is still empty.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the parking lot that we kind of rent, so to speak, is this area back here.
We, we leave that, right?
And Matt, the lot, the, the lot that you're pointing to though, that's up for discussion is this little shed right here, right?
That's this portion right here.
Right.
Yep. And then the other one that abuts is actually dogleg right there. Yes.
And the, the abutting portion is approximately twenty-eight feet.
Yeah, so that's, that's plenty of room for.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is.
To go through there.
Yep, it is. Okay.
And it also provides a connection to the, to Third Street there.
Mm-hmm.
By the way, in and out.
Yeah.
That's a good point, John.
More circulation, yeah.
That's a good point.
Okay, so going through this again, um, it sounds like the first property in Millard Road, we're, we're good on the, the, let's just go through this right now and say which ones you want to sell and which ones you want to keep. Then I think you can have a second discussion of how you want to sell it with John versus. So the Millard Road property is a yes, move forward.
Uh, I still have, I don't know, you know, my, my thought would be, you know, the way we're growing and everything, I know it's a, it's, it's a ways out, but we're, at some point in time, hopefully it would be nice to have a hospital out here maybe. So, but you know, if that ever happens, I don't know. So, you know, do you want to keep it or do we want to use it for something else?
Easy for you to say. You're not up for reelection. Don't even talk about hospital.
What I, I would say the nice thing too is if you look at, if you do look at selling it, even through like an RFP process, that doesn't mean you have to accept any of the offers.
That's true.
And by owning it, you kind of own the future of it. So if you want a certain kind of development there, if you want commercial with mixed residential or whatever you want, you own that destiny.
Well, it, it could be, it could be expanded to the seventy-five foot repairian zone too for the buffer of the park and the walking trail, but it keeps, that, that third just keeps coming back. And I ain't going anywhere for at least two more years. So I'm just saying, that third of that park just keeps coming, making its way back onto this little thing. And, um, we talked about a pocket park, Pam Ranch and all that, um, so.
The picture you see here, mayor, is not something I got from Jacob. Uh, this is actually just from the county tax map lot thing. It may not be the most accurate one, so, um, don't, don't get too, uh,
I'm not, I'm just, I just. Just saying.
I think the assumption is that when you talk about the Millard Road property, you're talking about the entire extent of city ownership between Maple and Millard.
Yes.
Not just the, the blue rectangle as shown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, now even getting the mayor thrown out, the letter of needs of hospitals are changing. And with this pandemic, we've seen that the small towns and rural towns really did need a hospital. So maybe there'll be a change in how we can configure the need for a hospital, which got us in the backside the last time.
Do you know something I don't?
Well, take a look at Iowa and somewhere in Nebraska and the Dakotas where they didn't have enough hospital beds. And all of those places couldn't have hospitals because the letter of needs said they didn't have enough people, they didn't have this, or they didn't have that. Basically the same problem we had way back when.
Okay, I was making a joke. I thought I heard you say get the mayor thrown out.
Yeah, no. You'll get thrown out is what I meant to say. But no, the need for hospitals, at least the legal requirements are hopefully going to change. It was quite obvious this last couple of months that the old letter of need really hurt us.
Agreed, but we can keep her open and, at least be open ideas.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Steve, population is a part, is factored in on, uh, a lot of the needs for a hospital and as said, and we're grown, we're growing fast. Yes.
So this is the second property on the list. Sounds like we were ready and okay with moving forward on this property.
Yep.
And then we were good for moving forward on this piece of property here.
Correct.
And those are two city lots.
Yeah, so that'd be, yep.
And Jacob, are those apartment residential? Cause there's apartment complexes right next door. Are those just duplexes next door to it? Or actually on both sides?
Oh, let's see, that's on, uh.
South tents.
Cause there is rather, on both sides is either a duplex on one side, I think, and then a apartment residential on the next other side.
It looks like it's R ten, or no, no, I'm sorry, R five.
R five?
It's, they're probably duplexes. I'd, I'd have to look more closely.
So if somebody were to buy them together, they could put a bigger complex on it for spacing, right? I mean, but verse, via the R five code.
Well, so multi-dwelling units are possible and if you want to do multi-dwelling, um.
Say a fiveplex on there. What's the square footage?
So if you want a fiveplex.
And they were combined together. Cause this, well, this is the type of things that people don't know and don't know how to ask Jacob, you know, they, because a duplex we know will fit on there automatically. They're duplex lots, but you might even be able to put maybe six on the square footage.
So fiveplex, you would need thirteen thousand three hundred.
And it'd be eleven thousand six.
Yeah, so it's not like it's, it's big enough for a fiveplex. Yeah, so it's not like it's, it's big enough for a fiveplex.
But a fourplex it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
And and easily with the, with the new rules coming up.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one, we would like to hold off on and keep possibly look at making it right away or what, however Jacob and Sue. Feel it's most apropos for the future.
With all the rock on it, can put a volcano on it.
Well, we tried putting a volcano, it didn't work out so.
That was flat ground.
And then this property near the parking, um. So this one we would hold on to as well as the flag property. So hold on to those and then hold on to this one.
Yep.
Okay.
But you, did you get the Umatilla one?
Which one?
The, the twelfth street.
Yeah, that was the second one.
Was it?
Yeah, right there.
Okay. Yeah, the wetland one Jacob was talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, so that's the next step, the second question, I guess, goes more towards uh, John. And how you want the city to move forward with those properties.
So on the Millard, I mean, it's obviously the couple residential lots and the larger Millard Road property. I didn't hear any unanimous consensus on the Millard, it's, it's seem like you guys weren't completely together on that.
Well, I think if somebody came through.
That first level of just first year of decision, whether they're gonna move forward with selling it.
I think if somebody came through with the honest offer of the appraisal, we'd probably be listening, let's put it that way. It appraised at two point five million, correct?
I think it was two point three, yeah.
Yes.
But you know, with with some assumptions of. Lot yield and the like, so.
Could the word be put out for the proper uh, offer? We would be interested, so ask, but right now it's not for sale, or how could you, I mean?
Well, one, if if we're looking at to a developer for residential development, there's. You know, avenues to get those properties out there, introduced to the market, I know we've been. Reached out by some of the, the big, big builders or both locally and nationally that. Looking for projects to line up in this area and they would be very interested in submitting a proposal.
But I don't want residential, I just want an offer, I, I don't want to limit myself just to residential as to the real.
That's also part of own, the, of owning the property, we can control, it's what we want to see there. If you want to work with somebody to have an intended outcome, we can go through a process to target. Uh, a use, but if we're just selling it, you know, conceivably somebody could just buy and hold too, which is, I don't know that that does the city any real benefit. I think the intent here with these is to get them sold and into productive use.
Let me ask you this, and Keith can't really talk on this, but somebody like Community Action or like uh. Um, Habitat, those guys, they're nonprofits for the bill, but they're actually taxable units when they're, they're done, right? Is that correct? Anybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Totally understand the question, but. And that's another consideration.
I mean, low income house.
Well, if we were to offer them at a price, because they're owned by the citizens, at a price, but a fair price that worked out for everybody. Maybe we should reach out there first and see if it's something they'd be interested in. I don't know, that's just kind of me and my, you know.
I, I'm gonna follow up on that, Rick, how about again for nonprofit having an education vocational training center? Uh, for people who need to learn how to get a job. As compared to a living space.
Steve, we, we offered it to PCC for free and they turned it down.
PCC has a problem in a number of areas, I wouldn't use that as a stick for measuring anything.
I wasn't talking about the large chunk, you guys, I, I, I think you're, I'm talking to smaller chunks for like Habitat, the, the three that we have. Well, yeah, three, because there's two on tenth and one on twelfth that are, that are built, I was talking those three.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's all I was talking about, I wasn't talking about the big chunk. But really. I think that would be the smart approach on those three smaller chunks is to maybe see, you know. If it's something they're interested in.
I agree with it, I totally agree with the mayor to approach uh, those. Uh, those usages on those, on those properties first, just to put it out there, I mean.
Yes.
That makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
I will note that a bird told me there is interest.
Good.
From some of those entities.
Good.
Good. We'll follow up on that, hopefully.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, so on the, the Millard piece, that you have uh, a portion, that was purchased with hospice, hospital district funds. Uh. And, you know, not all, but, but some of it was, and there's. You know, public housing's been a theme out there that's been talked about over the last several years, for at least a portion of that. Or some, some other use that would, would benefit the, the public as a whole. Not, not just selling it on the market, finding the city's coffers with it, with the funds.
Could help for a police station.
It could help pay for a park too, which would definitely, yes. It still wouldn't cover the whole cost, but it would cover a chunk of it.
That is true, those funds could be, proceeds could be realigned, reallocated to a public use as well.
You can buy back part of the uh, Dogren Park again that we sold.
Um, I did reach out to the school district and Scott Stockwell on that piece of property and they are uh, getting back to me on. What that estimate would be if we did. Purchase that back.
Yeah. That's not a bad idea too, Keith.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of options out there, um, you know, just the disposal process of.
It, it can also be, once it is sold, um, if it is sold, it can also be just placed into a separate fund. That it can be designated at a later point when the city council deems necessary.
Yes, hey Sue, any update on the uh, this is kind of off beaten path, but it, it's in resemblance to the. Millard Road property, um, the stoplight out there with ODOT?
Last I heard, that was out to bid, that ODOT had that out to bid.
So it is actually going forward.
That's the last update that I received. Does that mean that it will be bid and then the funding yanked, I, that's something I wouldn't have any idea.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, but that's, that's the last thing I heard, that was probably a month or so ago.
So it is moving, still moving forward.
I, again, that's, yeah, that's what I heard from the ODOT folk, yeah.
Yep, okay. Alright, um, so I think unless there's any other questions, we'll take this, everybody okay with this, the five minute break? Is there, people need ten?
Five's good.
Five's good?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll just take a little recess for five minutes here.
I have a career thing. Okay. Okay. Is everybody back here? There's Councilor Locke, Councilor Topaz, President Morton, I don't see him. You here yet Doug?
I don't see him quite yet.
Nope. We'll hang on just another minute or so.
There you go.
Alright, we're all back now. Council President Morton, you here?
Yep, he's here.
Alright, okay. Alright, let's update on RFPs for Riverwalk and South First Street and Strange Street Road and utility extensions. John?
So are we concluded on the last attendant there? It seemed like we took a break kind of mid without closure there.
Oh, we had closure. We had, we wanted to reach out to.
They ring property owners, right?
Yeah, well, the smaller lots were actually, no, reach out to maybe community action and Habitat first to see if there's an interest there. If there's not, then go ahead and move forward.
Okay, that's a good recap there. And then on the Mallard?
We're always open.
We could go through a proposal, an effort to do a RFQ, or not RFQ, RFP proposal for development proposals to see what there is out there, what we get back. And throughout the creation of that process, we can design the desired, what the city's wants out of the process. Perhaps some of those things could be a mix of housing types, it could be constructed when a certain timeframe type of things.
I had, in the meantime, I had a call in from one of our Parks Commission Directors and they wanted to know the acreage of parkland that was set aside at Mallard. I could not tell that person what that acreage was. Does anyone have that on top of their head? Did we decide that? Rick, do you know?
Yeah, that has not been determined. And there's some pretty natural areas to the north there.
Yeah, and that was the areas, that was the area that we, I think we all decided would be a good wetland park of some sort. And correct me if I'm wrong.
You're right. No, you're right. At a connectivity trail between two lots for that bridge that was there was part of the discussion as well.
Exactly, exactly. But I don't know, I couldn't tell, I couldn't tell them the acreage that we were looking at, whether it was one acre or four acres or what. But anyway, I just asked if anyone, if anyone knew off the top of their head. If not, we'll figure it out.
And that could be baked into the RFP too, is to talk about what kind of reserved areas want for public access.
Well, I think that's a big selling point for anyone in that, in that community. And anyone who is looking to live in an area that those kinds of, those kinds of areas that are set aside that way are are quite important to livability.
Yeah, and just to recap on that, and maybe you could also, I don't know who called you from Parks Commission, but two of buddy neighbors expressed they did not want a large park there.
I know that.
Yes, so, so we did have that as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, and it could be that.
I remember. I recall those hot, heated discussions back then.
Yep.
Yeah, it could be that the existing wetlands there on the site are designated parks and there's trails that can kind of interconnect and you know, work through the development as one kind of a flowing system that goes through the site. It's just not boxed off on the north end there.
That's a good point, John, because that, that there's a substantial amount of wetland area right off of adjacent to Mallard Road. That could be kind of combined through, through a community trail down to the next wetland, which could connect back into the Furlough area that way. So I can see that. And trails aren't so invasive at all. I mean, they're just part of a, part of the ambiance of a, and I think an amenity.
Exactly, exactly. Definitely amenity, yes. Yep.
Okay, I feel like we have direction on that. Thank you. So we want to move on to the next issue, the RFQs for the waterfront.
Yep.
Alright, so coming up next week, December 8th, Tuesday, we are, we'll be receiving proposals for the two RF rest request for qualifications to select design firms for the, the two projects, one's more civil oriented, the street connection and utilities that connect you know, First Street to Plymouth and then the strange street back to First. That's one, one skillset that we're hoping to get qualified firms from a civil group. And the other one is the River, Riverwalk component, which has the Riverwalk, the trail, the redesign of Columbia View Park to include the new stage structure, ban shell type amenity. And I wanted to talk with council, this, a lot of times with these RFQs, this doesn't hit your radar. But this is a really important community project. We were, staff, we've been talking internally about having a pretty broad inclusive process, you know, right in down to members that are selecting this, these firms to do this work. So on the, we have a staff recommendation that has a combination of counselors, I mean, not a majority of counselors, but up to two counselors on each of these committees. Members of staff, myself, Mohammed is the Public Works Director, Sue, and either Dave Elder or Jenny Dimshaw or Sue Nelson on these committees. And then, so I wanted to get your feedback generally and then about we don't want these groups to be too large. If you get more than six to eight people on a group and it gets to be kind of unwieldy as far as selection goes. So on the Streets and Utilities Committee, we're looking at perhaps a six member commission or a review committee. That'd be myself, Mohammed and Sue, Dave and two counselors. I guess that'd be actually seven, so.
I'd like, I'd like to be part of that.
And that's the Streets and Utility component. And if there was two counselors that wanted to be on that piece of it, then there's two counselors on the Riverwalk section. And that's the Riverwalk, be myself, Mohammed, Sue, Jennifer, Dimshaw, and a representative from the Parks and Trails Commission, representative from the Planning Commission, and the names that stood out on the Parks and Trails was Carmen, Carmen Dunn as Chair and Dan Carey on the Planning Commission's, pretty involved with the wetlands and uplands kind of activity in his daily work on the commission.
I'd like to be on that one as well.
So you're actually.
You got counselors, you got two new ones coming in in three weeks.
Yes.
Probably, this isn't a conversation for Councilor Locke perhaps, but
Well, I.
But that's a factor too. And that is a factor if you want to select people that are, you know, see their interest in being on the commission as well.
I'd volunteer for both of them.
Yeah. And Councilor Topaz reached out to me and requested to be a part of the process as well.
Good. So in amongst the council, amongst the council, I have an observation. Many times it's good to have someone as an alternate or put two counselors in one seat and so that we can rotate through that. If one counselor can't make that meeting, then the, an alternative counselor can, but I think that, that our council needs representation always at those meetings. And sometimes I think it's good to team so that you can, at one time, one counselor can take it and any other counselor can take it. They can collaborate with each other. It works pretty well, I think. So if we had three counselors assigned, but only two could go to the meeting, I like that formula.
And the council, I should probably state that the council has the authority in the selection. This is an advisory committee to the council. And the reason for having, limiting it to two is just an avoidance of the public meetings process.
Exactly.
Announce meetings and all of that. So it's pretty administrative in nature.
Well, exactly. I actually would, the streets, I'm more passionate about the boardwalk, you know I am. And the, and the park, you know, I'd like to see a pier dock. I mean, I got all kinds of, you know, gabion cages and, you know, but that's not up to me, but I'd definitely like to be a part of that, more so than the roads.
This is about, about us selecting a firm, it's no, there's.
Sure, but.
It's kind of initiating a process and there'll be public involvement along the way. It has opportunity for everybody to comment and have input.
Well, I, so I would have to agree that I would really like to see the new counselors get involved with this more than I understand the concept of where we're going. And that's maybe more of an educational thing for them.
That's another reason, yeah, that's another reason that I was going to bring up the three, because you can bring one of the counselors along and say, hey, you take it tonight. And, and I think that's a good way of mentoring. It really is that it, it just involves a counselor to, to partake. And another, and they, the more veteran to stand by. I, I, I like that, I like that model. So, you know, that's my, that's my input anyway. But I'm volunteering anyway for either of them, Topaz is and, and the mayor is. So we've got, we've got the three of us who are, who are interested in this. And how we're going to divide it up, I'm not certain, but I think part of it is mentoring the new counselors who come along.
Yeah, I definitely agree. I think just the process itself is crucial for them to get familiar with. That's just me. And I don't know if they have any experience in it. Maybe they do, you know, I'm not completely familiar with Patrick's history or Jessica's.
This is real similar to the last time when we did the request for proposal review for the waterfront design.
So, hey, those new counselors aren't here, so just run the railroad and assign them to the committee.
Who's not here? It's your choice to make now.
That's right. John, will, will the selection actually, will we start, will this process start prior to them coming in? I mean, are we looking, the deadline is the eighth, so that committee will actually be reviewing these maybe on the 12th, 13th, 14th, maybe before our council meeting, maybe after our council meeting?
The published schedule talks about having a review starting off in December 14th, just in a couple of weeks. That doesn't mean they couldn't be a part of the process. We have non-elected on it as well.
Yeah.
That might be even more reason to put them on this early, would be counselors coming on.
Yeah.
They're not elected yet, not violating any court rules.
That's, that is true. Could you reach out to them and let them know what's going on and that we'd like them to show up and participate?
I could do that.
Yeah. What are you doing Keith? You're making noise. It popped up on the screen.
He's popping corn.
Yeah.
I'm arguing with myself again.
Okay. Retirement must be nice, huh?
Yeah.
So, it sounds like I would be willing and Doug and Topaz with the council right now, so I know I'm going to champion the project no matter what because it's, it's huge and it's been well thought out and so I'm comfortable in taking a backseat. But if you feel like I need to be a voice for the community, I will do that as well. I'm here to serve.
Yeah, this is reviewing proposal documents.
Yep, yep.
Trying to select the best firm for the community's needs.
Yep.
And I'm daddoed, I'm daddoed in with the mayor because I, I feel very, have very similar feelings that I can, if I can be of help, I'll step forward and do that. If the council feels a little indifferent, or if you feel different about that, John. And want to involve the new council somehow, some way, I'm fine, I'm fine mentoring or like Mayor said, taking a backseat. I don't mind that.
So I have.
I still want to stay involved.
Well, that's one thing is right now we are going to be involved and even the public will have an opportunity to look at some of this stuff and have testimony if they wanted to in some way, shape or form down the road. Right?
Exactly.
So we could have either Counselor Morton and Counselor Topaz on both committees and invite the council elect people, we could have.
Yep.
So Martin and Counselor Topaz on separate committees and have Counselor Locke and Carlson potentially just be a part of it, along with inviting the would be elected.
Sure.
There's really any, any combination of way you want to do it.
Why don't, why don't you, why don't we just put this up to you to figure it out? You know that Topaz and myself and the mayor are, are at your, we're available, okay? I, I just, I think that when you're in, and why don't you just do that? Rather than us, us trying to decide who's going to do it, whatever, because we're, we're all interested in it.
This is a circular reference perhaps. I'm looking to you for direction and you're putting it right back on here.
Okay, so, yes, let's go ahead. Doug expressed that he wants to be on the parks part of things. Let's put him and because of the electeds, the non-elected or the elected can come in because they're not actually sworn in. So let's get them started on that process too, invite them to that. And Counselor Topaz, if you want to be in on that one, you're more than welcome to. And, or I can sit on the parks one, you could be on the street one.
Keith, Steve is muted right now.
He is. That's why Counselor Topaz, do you want to unmute yourself? We don't even know what you want. I can't see him on my screen.
Looks like he hit the wrong button.
Hit the camera instead of the mute.
Okay. So up in the top, very top.
A little different on that. If he's on his iPad, that's a little bit different.
There he is.
Yeah, I'm on my iPad too.
Oh, yeah.
On the very top.
Now, now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because my upper top went away and I couldn't find it again.
Okay, so we are just, you heard us talking. What would you express? Which one would you like to be on for the review? The roads? Or the, the trail?
The trails, the one by the water. The roads are a half a block back.
Okay.
So that's the trails, correct?
Yes.
Okay, it was the trails.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and put the Council President Morton and Steve on that and invite Jessica and Patrick to come listen in and get familiar with what we're doing, how we're going forward. Because that one's going to have some funding available. And the needs to be really well thought out, so. And then I'll be on the other one. And I don't know, Counselor Locke, would you like to send in on the roads?
Sure.
Okay, so there we go. There's your direction, John.
And also have the council elect.
Yeah, okay. Yep, yep.
Just, alright, thank you. Look forward to this process. It's gonna be great.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion on that, John?
No, that's it.
Okay, so let's go to Strategic Action Plan Updates.
I will be quick. The, on the agenda tonight is the fee schedule for business licenses. We discussed this at the last meeting. Most of the general business fees will go down a little bit with the restructuring of the municipal code. So that fee schedule is on for tonight's approval. Also on tonight's approval is the towing contract with Drake's Towing. They were the only respondent from the RFP process. We pretty much did the same three-year contract that Scapoose has with Grumpy's Towing. And so that is on for tonight's approval. A couple of things I want to let you know, you might hear throughout the community in St. Helens about polling going out right now. We are doing polling currently this week regarding the public safety facility. And then I also want to remind you that you all should have a email from SNG, which is the fiber company that presented at the last council meeting. You have a survey link and a password in your email that you, I would ask that you try and do. The sooner that gets done, that tells them that we're actually interested. So if you don't respond, that tells them that we're not interested in moving forward. So if you did not receive that email or something, please let me know and I could forward you your. Everybody has a specific, unique link to click on with the password. That was included in the message, but if you did not receive that email, please let me know and I will get that to you as soon as possible. So it is, they gave a due date of 12/9, which is next Wednesday for everyone to complete. I know I get email alerts when the survey is completed, so when it is done, I get a confirmation that it's been turned in. So I've only seen a couple of people from Columbia City as well as some internal staff here at St. Helens that have completed that. So if you can please remember to check your email and do that survey. It takes probably five, 10 minutes. It's about 15 or so questions. It's not very long, it's very quick. So if you can please do that and that will help us move forward with the fiber project.
Okay.
You know what day that email came out, Matt?
Actually Thanksgiving or the day after Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you.
I think I seen it. I think I seen it. I didn't think I recognized it, so I don't think I clicked on it. Okay, uh, city administrators report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The, so. After being out last week, it's been really challenging, challenging to catch up after the Thanksgiving break there. Um. So several things, the Christmas tree is up in the plaza. It looks amazing, probably the best one I've seen. There's no. Branches, uh, two-by-fours holding it up, our branches screwed on with nails and. Scraping like they have done at some of your years past, but it looks really nice. But, uh, so the tree's going to go up. It's going to be decorated and, uh, actually just lights. Um, it'll be lit when it's done and then it'll stay, stay up throughout the month. On the twelfth, December twelfth, there's going to be the. Uh, Christmas ship's visit. It's going to be a really, it's pretty sparse, um. You know, the, the docks will have kind of limited access. The Christmas ships folks are trying to encourage people to not come on the docks. Try to keep that contact. We, we are serving them dinner through a catering option, working with Wild Current on that. The Santa will be a drive-through Santa through the plaza. There'll be, certainly it'll be at the top of the courthouse steps. There'll be elves kind of running down and there's this candy cane. Kind of a slide shooter gun, calling it, calling it a gun. Lastly, with that, we're going to open up the veneer gate right there. It's going to be a drive-in, don't get out of your car type of a. Scenario to view, drive-in ship viewing. That should, uh, is there any questions with that? It's, it should be fairly simple and straightforward.
No, and our city website actually does explain that, that very well. So.
Right, we're not trying to keep people away. Observe all the COVID protocols and that's been an ongoing challenge, you know, particularly with this, uh. Governor's orders and ocean compliance. There's several things we're doing with infection control plans on the agenda tonight. There's. A couple of risk assessments internally. We have, we require just a bit, risk assessments and, uh, some other, other issues related to that. So, let's see what else I have here at the. It's December, can't believe it's December. Uh, looking forward to having 2020 behind us, but as year ends, we, this is typically the time of year we do performance evaluations. Specifically with the counselors and liaisons and things of that nature. So that's at that time of year. And then we're. Looking at communications, um. Crystal, as you know, has been, or is our public information officer and our point of contact for all communications and she's been out, so. She's back in the office now, hard time and, and we're glad she's here, but. Kind of a special thanks to all the people that have been kind of filling in with Rachel and, um. Rachel and Kathy and Cameron at the library have all kind of come together to keep that communication stream flowing as best as we can. It's been, it's been a little, little bit rough. Sometimes, but we, we've got through it. It's, uh, getting back to more normal. And looking at the year ahead, there's communications as a component to that, but planning out the next quarter as far as. Reviewing a government policy that council rules, perhaps looking at a charter review of sorts. You know, our public, public involvement throughout next year, the extent we can through this period of COVID, uh, addressing the city through. State of the city, type of an event and just a general project that we have out, communicating those. I, I mentioned the RFQs on December eighth, so that's the, uh. After the deadline for council, I sent you a request for extension from the relevant building. Um, company, which is the company on Seventh Street over there that has the foundations in, in the ground for the container homes, the, uh, portable housing container homes. I wanted to get your, your concurrence. They're asking for a six-month extension due to the. Number of points they brought up. It's kind of new and innovative and, which means probably not straightforward. I think that's quite a bit of delays here, but they have a considerable investment in the property so far, but they just haven't been able to move forward. The units are built. Um, they need to be finalized and, uh, worked to our permitting. Uh, my recommendation is that six months is, is very appropriate, so. And nods or.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Um, in your next meeting on sixteenth, we'll be looking, we should be able to look at, uh, what. Another franchise agreement with Waste Management, uh. Uh, for the container box. We have a franchise with Hudson's for the garbage dis- service collection, but with waste management. For the container drop box pickups. Um, that's. Next Monday, we're going through, uh, your, I mean. Doing, reviews. We're really pleased to get a pretty. A good group of applicant, well, well qualified applicants. And, uh. The last time we did a recruitment for Building Official, we involved the community members or committed the building community out there, so we. Reached out to, uh, Rich Bailey and to see his interest as kind of representing the building committee. With, with Mike DeRoya's hire, Randy May was part of that process, but I guess I tried, I thought we tried somebody different. So try to have the full perspective of, you know, some of the building community thinks they can work with as well. Hopefully there shouldn't be any issues there. The, uh. Community Development Block Grant that we are, city is sponsoring for the food bank had been opening yesterday. We received. Four proposals and then. I think nearly all the proposals were within the budget of the. That, but there's one apparent low bidder that we're working with to make sure they're, uh. All the paperwork's in order. That project's definitely moving along. And just, just, just to comment on this Comcast franchise earlier and that just. You know, you think about these things in 10-year bites when we go into these agreements. In my mind, the, you know, if there's one thing constant, it's change and that's when you look at the. Going from analog to the place we are now with the technology and it's really. This underscores how much, you know, our duty is to look that far ahead at least and, uh. There's a. Have the long look at things, so. And let's see. I think that's it. That was. Okay, I think I'll stop there. That's right.
John, John, I have a question. Uh, out in the front room, there's a girl there who sits at a desk. Who should have a name tag so people come in, know who she is. Since she's the greeter. Could, could, could you, uh, somehow facilitate buying a, a name tag to put on her desk? So when people come in, they know who Sullivan is? Once upon a time. Once upon a time I bought one for Heidi, but the tradition wasn't followed when we got a new greeter. It'd be nice for the public to know who this person is out there.
Well, the one for Heidi still exists.
Yes, I know, but, and Heidi's moved over around the corner, but we.
I thought you were going to offer to make another one, so.
If I can find the equipment, we will, but we ought to do that. I mean.
Okay, um. Well, let's go ahead and adjourn, but we are going to be going into executive session here after our break or our adjournment. Uh, under ORS one nine two six six zero two E and H, well, E Growth Property and H Consulting with Council Potential Litigation. And so, uh, we will be doing that. Um, and with that, we are adjourned.